Tell you to start that. We gonna have some serious problems.
You don't know problems?
What they do? Well, I'll take my things off the screen. Oh yeah, that's a whole lot better. There you go. My thing get broke, man. See, my protector screen. Protector man. Hopefully, I got an extra one at the crib. There you go.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you heard. It up and popped on you.
Nah, I'm on YouTube, brother. You on Facebook. I do YouTube. This whole, we in a whole other zone.
Oh, where?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm back working now. Said, I had to take my screen off of that, nah.
Man, I just be hating, man. I can't see.
I see. I hate it, man. I was talking to YouTube because of my screen.
Oh, true?
Yeah.
Now, where your broom at?
We lost.
Oh, oh, my bad.
Get the hell out of here. Get the hell out of here.
Let me tell you something. I'm tired.
Hey.
What?
What part of the ticket?
If Mike leave, can you take it off?
Hell nah.
Are you back there?
Yeah. What?
They put them spikes up.
Oh, shoot. You know I'm gonna be here, so, yeah, probably. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think I'm leaving, man.
What's in the gym that I'm wearing?
It's not that much, man. Married, but they suspended me. He, that's how, that's...
Mickey, how you gonna come here and sit next to people that ate Funyuns? What they do to that? No. They ain't come and eat Funyuns.
Man, I just ate two bags of joints, man.
Y'all need some Tic Tacs.
Man, ain't that, ain't gonna be in your face. There's some people, there's some people that eat them and don't, I mean, don't eat them and eat by the whole damn bottle of them, man. And Mr. Rain, with Al toys.
I was at that little thing as a kid, but you probably stood up there and Mr. Rain at it.
Oh, you got on a damn shoe. Damn, damn, damn. Damn. I miss broom. Hey, Mickey!
Mickey, don't fall in.
Hey, Mickey, man, damn.
I came in here, you know, I messed up my bag.
Melissa, what's happening? Hey, man, look, y'all.
Hey, what's wrong with you?
Hey, y'all, look. I'm talking about her. Wait until she walk over there, I'm gonna tell y'all about her.
Because I had to wear a longer skirt, because it's cold in here.
It's not, no, it's not.
It is.
Hey, y'all, listen.
Y'all, look, Winston is crazy. Don't y'all trust him? See, over here, he ate two bag of Funyuns sitting next to somebody.
No, I didn't, not in here.
Okay, Mickey got a bag of Funyuns right now.
I ate them at the barber shop.
Okay, he got Funyuns, right?
Hey, y'all, she telling, wait until she walk away.
I got flat shoes on. I got a long skirt.
Dorothy. What's Dorothy? Who'd have to go cry and the house fell on her and her shoes was sticking out?
You know what? You going to hell with gasoline.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God, man. Hey, what's her name? The wicked witch of the east or something like that? And her shoes was sticking out from up under the house? Did my dad have his shoes?
You know what?
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Ah, man, damn, y'all, over. For Phil Mitch. Hey, man, he got some numbers up there.
I know. How many he got? Why don't you show?
Because, man, my...
Facebook don't like you.
I don't give damn. They don't like nobody, man. Facebook, Facebook put everybody, block everybody's account.
Well, that's because they, they need to, um...
They block everybody's account, man, won't shut certain people down. I don't know why they ain't, uh, shut down Mud Duck.
Let me go take my seat, because I was the first person to go, she was late. And I had one joke on there. Don't let him talk about me, man.
Who?
You.
I had to turn around, man. Hey, y'all. All right, you got on a long skirt. Okay, okay, okay. She getting ready to start. Hey, she look like she getting ready to praise dance, y'all. Hey, y'all!
I need some praise, Tony, Scotty!
Tony got on her praise dance outfit. Wait until she walk away. Don't nobody leave. If you gotta leave, wait. Baby, don't nobody leave until Tony gets up, man, all right, y'all? Hey, look, see, that's how we have fun, see? That's how we have fun. I don't mean nothing by it, you know what I'm saying? She'll probably end up talking about my nose in a minute.
I'll never talk about your nose, because that's a characteristic feature of African-American people.
Man, man, my uncle, my uncle used to say, uh, I work for Campbell's Soup with my soup coolers, man.
Your uncle ain't right. Y'all playing the dozens.
Yeah, I talk about his mama, too. That's my grandmother.
You can't talk about your grandma.
I talk about my uncle's mama in a high dress. I told him she had a rough life. I mean, we just be joking.
You going to hell.
We just be joking. That's my grandmother. Loving it, though. She crazy. You know, but, uh, yeah, it's fun, y'all. It's all about having fun. Oh, shit. There he go. Oh, God. Oh, God, man. Them two. Oh! Hey, you know what? I, I didn't even see, I don't even have my glasses on, y'all. I didn't have my glasses on. I didn't even know that was you. I thought you was somebody else. But, but you have, you have troublemaker. Hey, you need to get, you need to get out my video, man, because you and Winston, I seen when I put that 810 over my face.
Why he got that camera turned that way?
Oh, oh, I don't know. I don't know. Hey, y'all, what, what song, we gonna have Tanya to do Neander Johnson, Deliver Me, praise dancing in the center. She got on a praise dance outfit. Somebody bring her the white gloves, too. Somebody bring the white gloves up here. Hey, hey, man, don't nobody leave until Tanya leave. Don't nobody go off my, don't nobody go off my podcast.
You're going, you know what?
Oh, nobody. Nobody knows.
Um, she does, not with me, with me. It's one of the, um... She does one of the, um... I think I made it in here. It is, too. That on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
That's the money. Hey, this ain't, ain't any church. She stepping into the world now. This the world right here. Oh, God, there she go, y'all. There y'all go. There she go. There she go. Look high.
Look, that camera right over here.
You really don't know, you know?
I really don't.
So... You are lying.
He is, both of them. Hey, Tanya getting ready to praise.
Hey, wait a minute. Wait a minute. I don't know, look, I don't know if I got on naked pants or black.
Oh, God. Oh, y'all just combobulated up in here today, boy. Y'all, hey, hey, y'all, y'all just, hey.
I don't even know!
Oh, nope, nope. Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. Hey, no, Mickey, no. No, Mickey, no. No, no, no. 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 And then she got a partner in crime with her. No, no, uh-uh. They cannot come up here.
Too loud.
We are. Hey, hey, look. Hey, 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 hey. It's been so old. Hey, look. Hey, you already on here now. You already on here now. Yeah, yeah. Uh-oh. Hey, y'all, look. Hey, hell nah. That's fine. You just did that. That's fifty dollars. You just put your business on my Facebook. Fifty dollars. Uh, nah. Hey, hey, don't be trying to walk by. Hey, oh, Tanya. Aw, man, why, oh, oh, hell nah. Oh, hell nah. Hell nah. You made me mess up. Tanya, Tanya, Tanya dressed like she getting ready to praise dance. Hey, y'all, look. She, she eased past me, man. Look, she got on her praise dance outfit. Stand up, Tanya, let us see. Hey, man. Hey, man. Hey, she a ease, she a ease by, man. She ease by on me, Mickey. Huh? Yeah, Tanya did. She gonna ease by. And she gonna go and mess with Denise. Don't talk to her. Hey. That's Flint B. Flint B. Man, yeah, I don't know. I don't, man. Yeah.
This time it was now four forty-seven, and the special affairs committee is now being called to order. Roll call Matt Clark. President. Mr. President. Priestley?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Chet?
Present.
Mr. Piper?
Present.
Ms. Worthy?
Present.
You have page numbers present? We have page numbers present. Next request for changes and/or additions to the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
I make a motion to vote in sequence on any amendment.
All right, there is a motion towards a vote in sequence. Immediately. For all the agenda changes, in a second. Supported by Ms. Worthy. And we say roll call Matt Clark for voting for voting in sequence. Immediately for all agenda changes. Roll call Matt Clark.
Yeah, I understand, so I state on the record that that motion is out of order. It should prompt, I think, standing to be able to be down under the standing limits for those reasons.
Mr. List, yes. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy, darker?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Chet?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Worthy?
Yes.
Go with six yes, two no, and one standing. So, any agenda change? All right, see, has a cabinet, Mr. May?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's right, that motion is not in order, because we ain't did agenda changes, but I got one. I'm on a discussion. If Pastor Harris show up, um, on behalf of the concerned pastors, he does a classic feature. I want a discussion on this agenda, um, after resolutions about press conference, you, um, Pastor Chris Martin, and Pastor Harris made that I've seen glimpses of, that I want a discussion. And it's gonna tell me whether I need a special reading, and so I'm proposing an agenda for the discussion. About, I'm gonna call it your press conference, Pastor Harrison. Chris Martin, this past week or so, and I wanted actual board adjournments, and I so moved.
One second, please. The special orders tied to your press conference.
I didn't call it a special order. I called it a discussion. It's a different set of rules.
Ms. Smith. And at the end of the meeting. All right. Any more agenda changes?
I put that in the form of a motion, and I so moved.
Mr. May, that's improper, because for agenda changes, we are, we are making them by voice, so, and we're voting immediately.
Madam Chair, without harm in which you would without thought of point of order, y'all said over and over, if somebody got to throw up motion, it's in order. I put it in the form of a motion, and I so moved, yet I found that it's fair second.
Now, I promise, so keep it in mind that...
That violates, that, um, motion violates the, the, um, the motion that was approved by the majority of the council to vote in sequence in order, or in...
Point of order. Point of order.
What is your point?
Did she get to throw up, or is you out of order if I ask for a second? Did she say point of order?
Yes.
Or she just started talking?
No, she, she's a point.
So you get through on my point of order if I ask for one, but I don't see what you do. I'm waiting for you to ask.
Mr. May, so what is your point of order?
That you ain't asking for a second. Y'all in discussion and talking and saying you's out of order. If you say that I got a motion on the floor, it's out of order. I don't feel it, if you ask for a second, let's see what you do.
Mr. May, your, um, your motion is improper, because the body...
I appeal to the ruling of the chair.
That is fine. So, this appeal. Is, and what is your, your appeal, Mr. May?
That you won't ask for a second. You think it's an improper motion on an agenda change. I say it's not, you say it is. We'll see what the majority say. Your doubt, hour, is to ask, is there a second to your view?
All right, so there is an appeal for the rule of the chair, and their support.
Yes, Madam Chair, I support that appeal.
Our supporter by their requirement? Okay. Was it appealed for a second? That the chair did not ask for a second, or Mr. May's appeal, because the chair ruled it improper. Go ahead, Mr. May.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it takes time to learn, that's okay, but my position is this. Over and over in this meeting, since y'all have removed me from president, and y'all knew what you still knew, over and over, the record will show. Y'all have ruled over and over this word, and I think was the last one. Oh, you can make a motion. Oh. Motions can be made at any time. Oh, and then y'all have relied on the term of Kim and different people of this nature. Cussing bitch, what you wanna do? Ms. Priestley made a motion to vote immediately. Ain't but one agenda change. This don't conflict with our motion you're approving. Uh, and she, point of order, I made a motion to vote immediately, okay, so we still can vote immediately, whether it's one, two, or three. When I put it in the form of a motion, and I properly got the floor, it ain't no motion on the floor. That motion was to vote immediately, was really premature, but I put it in the form of a motion, yet I put that as fair second. I'm appealing it, because we've had problems with you, Chair. To the extent in the last meeting, this out of hand. And you swang your bow and throw people out of the line, council people elected in the audience. This is simple, and no matter what happens, this gonna be a vote on the agenda change. To see if we discuss what you thought was so important, running out to preachers. And preachers calling and saying stuff and didn't know the details, in my opinion, so it's gonna be a discussion on it. In this meeting, a special meeting, even if it's a special meeting and it ain't a court. If it's two people here, it's gonna be a public discussion on it. It ain't nowhere around. You put it out to today, to tomorrow, the next day. But I'm not gonna sit and look at you and evidence press conferences, telling the half the story, and then get in a council meeting. It ain't gonna talk about. The Concerned Pastors is a key organization in this predominantly black community that's Christian. And you writing to them, telling them half the story, get them taller than a public conversation. So let's have a public conversation with everybody here. That's how it works.
So, okay, so thank you, Mr. May. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this appeal? Okay, so seeing that no one else wants to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Piper?
Yeah, through you to the city attorney, Mr. Um, is it the, is it against the rules to ask for a second? Because that's what we, that's what the... That's what the competing others. It's not about anything else. She, she confused it to ask for a second. Is that against the rules to remember to ask for a second?
The chair can decide whether or not a motion's in order, under Roberts' rules. That's, that's clearly a duty of the chair. Chair, chairs, the chair of meeting is supposed to decide when motions are made, to decide whether the motion's in order, if you rule the motion's out of order. The chair does that, that decision would of course be subject to appeal. Whether or not the motion's out of order in any given circumstance is gonna depend on the service. So if you're looking at the question of whether she's required to ask for a second when a motion's made, that's, that's not correct, because the chair's job is to run the meeting in an efficient manner, and one of the explicit provisions in Roberts' rules basically gives the chair the rights, or the duty of determining whether the motion's in order to very... Although, the, the saying can say that a motion is always in order. That's frankly not in the either Roberts' rules, or council rules, or anything else, because otherwise that would essentially give the ability for somebody to take control of the meeting from the rest of the body just by making motions, one after the other. You could just start making motions, one after the other, and essentially, you know, take control and prevent the body from doing business.
So, I know the motion made by a councilwoman recently, um, was made with an agenda, it was the motion to put an agenda change of motion, is that, is that improper motion?
That would be up to the chair to decide, but given that the body had already decided to consider all the agenda changes immediately in sequence, effectively, what councilwoman made was doing was to essentially ask the body to reconsider its earlier decision, uh, without doing sort of this plot, again, these rules are...
Point of order.
What is your point?
In fact, the firm can't meet decision on this solely with the council, not you, correct? The council can decide this. Correct.
Mr. May, definitely invalid point of order.
Okay, I'm gonna appeal.
And that's a warning.
What? I'm appealing.
God, dog, she on that bullshit. She on that bull, man. That was bull crap, man.
Point of order.
Wow. He just asked a question to her, man. And she gonna rule him out of order, that's crazy.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Viner?
I second that motion.
Okay, and a second by Ms. Viner.
So...
Okay, so, so we're gonna pause that appeal that's coming, and we're gonna continue to give you the floor if you can finish, go ahead.
So, Mr. Kim, were you about to say that it's the pleasure of the body, whether true or false, whether, whether or not the, the motion was valid? Were you gonna say that based on the appeal, it's a pleasure of the body, is that correct motion?
Whether or not, turning whether or not the motion is in order suitable consideration is that it's, it's first the determination of the Chair of the meeting, which is also sub, which has been subject to an appeal by the, the body and the council members.
Um, thank you, Attorney Kim. Anyone else have a chair?
Ms. Viner?
Um, Attorney Kim, so are you stating, I don't have my Roberts' rules, I don't know if you have yours with you. I mean, we have been going by a motion is always in order, and when the Chair is asked, the Chair is to ask for a second, that has been our precedence. So are you saying we don't, it's not that way anymore? Or does that is generally the standard that council meetings have to have, run by?
Personally who has the floor in your Roberts' rules always has the right to make a motion, but that doesn't mean that the motion itself is...
So, there's one thing I do know, if you're looking at our precedents, whenever someone makes a motion, the Chair has always stopped to ask, is there a second? And we've had some council members very, um, disrespectfully say, um, it's your job to ask for a second, and that has been honored.
All I can say to that, and I don't believe that anybody has actually asked me that question previously.
Yeah, I can ask, Attorney Kim.
Not to me.
It has been...
Well, it, it may have asked it to somebody else, but I don't, I don't recall anybody.
It was to the Chair, the question was to the Chair. And should the Chair, and the Chair has, uh, in our, in prior meetings, all of our meetings, and even our chair, we would have to ask, is there a second? That had been the precedence by this body. And so when all these rules were changed, and the majority, I did not vote for these rules, but some of these rules, like open meetings, it's a violation. You get kicked out of one meeting, you can't come back to the next. Those are totally separate meetings that are adjourned. And so these rules are not good rules, and they, and for lack of better word, they are goofy rules. But we're off on two, and this is gonna be a problem. She's already giving Councilman May his first point, his first point, for asking for clarity for, um, who makes the decision, either this body or Attorney, or your Attorney Kim. So we're off on this rocky road already, and this is just not a good precedence to have already said. And I'm gonna say that again, we're not going to get far if this meeting is going to be run like it's a dictator. It's just not going to work. You have to allow for debate, and we cannot have, let me say, we're not supposed to have debate privately. We're supposed to have in the open, not texting people back and forth. Not supposed to do that. And when we're having these open conversations, it's supposed to be in the open. Allowing them to ask that question, it's not about warning. You want to warn everything, put everybody out. That's not a good chair. The role of the Chair is to keep everyone in the meeting, make sure the meeting is going. You're doing the same mess that you did last week. We have an agenda. You have started off with being the problem, Madam Chair. He asked for clarity through the Attorney, nothing was wrong with that.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Viner?
I think some councilmen have amnesia, because this is like before a good time we've done this. A motion is made, and...
Um, point of order. What is your point?
I am absolutely not gonna hear. Uh, she is not to speak to any motives and say some of the council members may have amnesia. You need to check her, or you don't, if you've given her one. She cannot speak to the motives of someone's mind and their ability to remember. She doesn't know that.
Proceed, Ms. Viner. Thank you. Um, there's a motion made to vote immediately in sequence. It was passed by this body. So following what was passed by this body, we would vote immediately and in sequence. There's a motion to be made, and this has happened like three or four meetings. And the script gets flipped to try to make the Chair look bad, and she's just following what we as a council decided to make. Um, so just noted that that's what's happening. I will be supporting the Chair, um, because we, as a council, decided to vote immediately and in sequence. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair, pray here.
Anyone else would like to comment on the appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley?
You know, when we, when we both made, when I made the motion, which we have used many times since, um, almost every meeting, and we go through this every meeting, that, um, Mr. May wants to make an agenda change, we will vote on your, on your motion, on your agenda change, along with any other agenda changes that were made. We voted up or down without discussion. It's limiting the time that is spent on discussion.
Request for information.
What is your point?
Does the motion I made conflict with your motion, Ms. Priestley?
Yes, sir, it does.
How?
Because you just make it, you just say one of the agenda change, you don't need a second on it, and you just vote on it.
Request for information.
What is your point?
Ms. Priestley, if you get around to it, if you live, do you believe it conflicts correctly?
Correct.
That's all I ask.
Thank you.
Alright, so may you, you can add on to it?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else would like to comment on this appeal? Ms. Viner?
Um, we voted when I first got here on voting sequence on the agenda item changes. So when the, uh, agenda item came up to talk about the, um, the Sunday pastors of the breast conference, my understanding was that we would want to vote up or vote down because we was voting in sequence. The last meeting that we had on Wednesday that I was here, I had to leave early. But, um, while I was here, we did not vote in sequence. And if you notice that meeting, we spent hours talking about the agenda changes. And by the time you guys really did get to a resolution, it was three or four hours in the meeting. And some of us was had to leave. Not, um, saying that, um, you guys is wrong, but y'all did not vote in sequence on Wednesday. And if you look at the difference, when you don't vote in sequence, and we have a fight to vote in sequence or not vote in sequence, but when you don't vote in sequence like that, that allows you the opportunity to speak. But that agenda change, for five minutes, then turn around and vote, um, speak on it again for five minutes, then turn around, once you come on agenda, then talk about it again. So you talking about the same agenda change, and you spending a lot of time talking about it. And it's not that we don't wanna talk about it, it's just that if we vote in sequence, we will be able to talk about it.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Through you to Mr. Viner, if that's the first agenda change, if we vote in sequence, that would be the first vote, any after that would still be a sequence for them.
Proceed, Ms. Viner.
We, we took a vote, we voted six to three to vote in sequen... So once we voted in sequence, bringing up a motion to discuss what we just voted in sequence just does not make any sense to me. It's not... Right, it's not...
Ms. Viner, please, Paul, um, Ms., um, my question, the time, the time to come on the chair. Thank you, proceed, Ms. Viner.
So I'll be supporting the Chair on this, um, appeal, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal? So seeing, um, I would like to call from the Attorney, this, Ms. Chair. Um, can you locate that in Roberts' rules?
Uh, yes, this kind of answers your question earlier. Uh, section ten twenty-six of Roberts' Rules of Order speaks to main motions that are not in order. Uh, one of the ones specifically listed is that states that no main motion...
Paul?
Request for information.
Go ahead.
Was that ten thousand twenty-six, or one thousand twenty-two?
It's ten cold and twenty-six, so it's, um... And number four under the examples of main motions that are not in order states that no main motion is in order, or conflicts with a motion previously adopted any time still enforced. There's also, number five, that, that section also talks to, speaks that no main motion is in order, which is conflicted, or presents substantial, the same question as blood, which has been temporary, but not final disposal.
Alright, and so, uh, thank you, Attorney Kim. So with that being said, is why the Chair used the Chair's authority to call a council member May's motion improper. If you would like to overturn the ruling of the Chair, you would vote yes. But to vote in favor of the Chair, you would vote no. Roll on my first.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley? No. Ms. Viner?
Yes.
Ms. Viner?
Yes.
Ms. Jeff?
No.
Ms. Viner?
I have standing to advocate for your decision.
Ms. Viner?
Come on.
Mr. May?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, five no, one extension?
The vote is three yes, five no, one extension. The ruling of the Chair is upheld. Now we're on to the point of order called by, um, Mr. May. Um, and he was given a warning, and so he appealed it. And so he was, um, he was issued, uh, being out of order and a warning for viewing the floor. He was, uh, he was viewing privileged motions and approving the second ruling. Proceed, Mr. May.
There, Madam Chair, calling a point of order is not an abuse. When you get legal opinions in a side of Roberts' rules, and I understand that I don't know the majority of the council do, but even after I spoke, the City Attorney said if a motion conflicts with the main motion, it don't conflict. If you put a motion on the floor for the intended change, and it's the person only one, it don't conflict with vote immediately in sequence. That's the first one, you vote on it first. Y'all hung up on a motion to vote immediately in sequence, and y'all hopped on sequence, and you're off. And so when the Attorney is speaking to say point of order or request for information, one time ain't no abuse, abusing no privileged motion. You doing the same thing you got removed from the Chair last week. You got to get one point of order, five minutes into the meeting, you just gave me a warning to throw me out of the meeting. That's rude. I'll be voting yes, that I wasn't out of order, trying to get clarification on a meeting, but then you are abusive and wrong. And I don't know what your intent is, but we come in here every meeting, and you issuing our warnings like you passing out Halloween candy. And you're going elective officials out of your seat in attempting to, if it's bad, by, or by the council people. And I'm knowing if this council is that dumb, if this council is that dumb to believe that you can warn somebody for doing a request for information of point of order to you as a City Attorney, they better show a hold that you remain in chair. Because in thirty years of council meetings, I've never seen a Chair try to throw elective officials out five and ten minutes into the meeting for proper conversation. So the majority of votes can continue to vote the way they want. Even in this, you give me a warning, you throw me out. That's a major right. Votes are sitting up here condoning wrongdoing repeatedly. And I'm right at this seat, as a concerned pastor, and a preacher, and anybody else that's come here to be in this regard. You are outrageous at this point.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Viner?
Yeah, that's, but, um... Request for the, the motion, whether or not that was, um, legitimate or not, that's according to the Attorney's discretion. But doing a point of order for clarification on the rules, especially when the Attorney is speaking, I don't know how that's out of order. I mean, it's, that's, request for, for point of orders for a rule violation, and he was asking for clarity on the rules, so I don't, for the rule, if that's out of order, if you can't even ask for the rule, for clarity on the rule, um, I don't know what's wrong with that. I'll be voting against the Chair.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Viner?
I'll be voting against the Chair as well, because first of all, we just started. I, my definition of abuse would be to do something, abusing the rules to, to do something continuously. A warning, but you're gonna give him a warning for asking a question, and his question was through you to the City Attorney. I don't care, but see, you're starting already, already. We're adults up here, we're not in a first grade classroom. And I'm not gonna sit up here, I'm an elected official. I'm not gonna sit up here and let you, allow you to treat myself and my other colleagues like we didn't, we, we're not, we're not here, that's what you're doing. Already, giving him a warning? We haven't been in the meeting, what, ten minutes? But this is, this is typical of you, this is what you do. I'll be voting against the Chair, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Viner?
I would hope that, that last meeting would become enlightening when we had to vote to remove you as Chair. What happened when we removed you was, we were able to get the business done that we weren't able to get done the prior meetings that you were chairing. So you're using your position as Chair in a form of retaliation as a very vindictive move. Abuse has to occur over a period of time.
Ms. Viner?
I'm gonna use the rule that applies to the speaking of members' waters.
I can, can you warn her, please? Because that's an improper point, because I'm speaking to what happened last week. Warn her. She needs to be warned.
Oh, she don't want, she don't want her, huh?
Are you gonna warn her for improperly taking the floor? I don't think she was here, so she wouldn't even know what happened.
No, she wasn't here.
So when we talk about how you're chairing, and this, it is, it is a part of what this is about. You had to be removed so we could do the business, that is a fact. That's a fact. An abuse, abusing a rule would happen over a amount of time. We're just outside. It's very proud for him to ask the Attorney, as Councilman Viner said, for clarity, to refer to the City Attorney, for clarity from...
for clarity from another person who has a legal degree. You shoot out these warnings in an effort to get rid of him, to get rid of me, to get rid of Councilwoman Murphy. You do it. You do it all the time. I have no problem with you like me, I don't like you. But it's very clear, I'm gonna do my job. You still have to be prepared. I told you last week, take a step back. We took a fifteen minute break, you came back and did the same thing, and you're doing it again. You don't possess the skills that to chair clearly. And what I mean is get locked down is because you're chairing. Once you're removed, we finished all eighteen nights that have been on our agenda that we haven't been able to take care of. You have been chair, it'll be, um, a year in November, and by now you should know, the rules are there to, as a guideline, not gonna be a stickler, because a good chair is going to say, you know what, I'm gonna cloud for some leniency, to keep the floor of the meeting, keep every council member in, and to be fair, whether I like them or not, you aren't doing that. He can't abuse the rule of the meeting, just got started? He had a question. The attorney was to have a conversation with Councilman Piper? That's the time. It's not abusing it when you're asking. A request for information is a quick inquiry. He gave a quick inquiry, look it up, look the definition up. He didn't go to a, into a long monologue, a quick inquiry, a request for information. That's it, and if you don't understand it, look it up. Because I don't wanna travel back down this road again with you, because I'm sick of it. You wasting my time, y'all talking about time. You meant these appeals, give it to this, because of how you chair these meetings. And in your words, I can tell, do better.
Right, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Anyone else like to speak on this appeal? Alright, so seeing none, just wanted to clarify, um, the chair's decision. The issue with that, um, Mr. May illegally took the floor away from Mr. Piper instead of asking the question during his own time. So therefore, that makes that point of order improper.
Request for information. Why didn't you warn Councilwoman Murphy, because she did the same to me?
Yep.
That did not happen.
Yep.
Get outta here, man. She's sorry, man.
So, seeing none, we have to be clear, we're talking about the abuse of privileged motion. We're talking about, um, abusing request for information, abusing request for points of order. That's what we're referring to. And underneath this, up here, the chair gave Mr. May's a warning. That was not the first point of order, but Mr. May's point of order was improper. And you cannot take away the floor using improper points of order. That's why the chair issued the first warning. Some of that means that, if you would like to vote against the chair, vote yes. If you would like to vote to uphold the ruling of the chair, vote no. Roll call, now, please.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Chrisley?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Shad?
I have standing.
Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
No.
Ms. May?
Yes.
No.
She need to take a first step.
Six yes, two no, one extension?
The vote is six yes, two no, one extension. The ruling of the chair happened over time. Alright. And we are on to... Alright, so we are, um, back to the request for change, depending to the vendor. Anyone thinking? Alright, so seeing none, we will vote and see one. For the item, having a discussion about your press conference with Pastor Martin and Pastor Hair, and it will be placed at the end of resolution. Roll call, now, please.
Ms. Chrisley?
No.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Shad?
No.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
No.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
She voted against her press conference.
The vote is four yes, five no.
She voted against her press conference.
The balance has changed, Phil. Now we're trying to move on to the public speaker. Any public speaker?
Uh, yes, here's the public speaker lady. My name is R.L. Mitchell. Live at seven fifty-nine East Center Avenue, in Board Third Ward, right on the boundary line of Board One and Three. But, uh, to you, Madam Chair, to, uh, Ms. Chrisley, that statement you made the other day about you was trying to have Board One, this man, that was fight, then cut the water off, just like that marriage, and I said, it was just like me, because I was in Board One when I was introduced to the young lady on Laredo Street at a house at two ten or three ten. And I was, went inside, the woman, the owner of the house, she was in the bedroom, never came out, but we were talking to her much, she said, listen, you gotta take your company, you go home, it's about ten o'clock. But I said, what, what's wrong with her? She said, her husband just died from sickle cell. And that's, I believe that's the topic of the day, because we gotta give the people sickle cell blood, but... She said, if you wanna help me, you... I ain't married a girl, but I don't know her for two days, because she had packed her clothes up, put them in the garage, and I, from that day to this one, and I just got hired in truck assembly, and one of the truck, in. I know her, now I know about sickle cell, because she said, how you gonna marry my cousin if you ain't never had a check? So I went and got a check, make sure I was right to get married, and... But, and she gave me the house from Laredo, I didn't know that just... Well, he had, he cut Marvis from Good Rock in South, and Johnny got up there and died. So sickle cell must be a bad too. And, and the box of the woman grew up, puffed them up, give every woman a, a million dollars for Michigan, I want you to pass that, like, too. But, and the people won't speak up, I'm speaking for the people. And, and the, and the people that Murphy, uh, P-Pack situation, but he couldn't mess up the situation by something nine more, so it won't get nobody on, nine more, and I got, what, five hundred dollars for things for on Wilmer Miller's street, but that, but he wasn't in the office then, it just... Big fellow was in office then, uh... What's that big fellow's name? Uh, Andy Ock, on that bank down, what? Where the people box free, moved in down there, moved their furniture in there. He quit the bank, he done, rented. The council didn't fix it up, and then Murphy gotta take over, but they still gonna be up, it's the same time everybody over there, when I was living over there at Scottville, getting everyone, and he, he, everybody go over there. I seen the iceman walking down the street and the whole, and all that stuff, and the cold from here. And, oh, I'm looking at the town again. But we finished on, and people in the hall, man, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I mean, deep out there.
And so, uh, that's our, my, my word that the P has thrown, we got audio, but the P has thrown. Alright, um, go ahead.
My name is Pastor Alfred, I'm from, the pastor's next guy, I'm in Second Ward, and I'm also a resident of a certain pastor's social action, I heard his press conference, you mentioned, but I asked if you would go listen to the entire press conference, so you would know where I stand. I came here today after talking to several council persons, uh, to give a word of encouragement. I'm not here today to do this. I'm here to do this. I'm sure you will agree with me, something needs to change in the operation of these city council meetings. I want to first thank all of you for accepting the challenge of serving the city, I know it's not easy. But in spite of some difficult, emotional, and even hostile city council meetings we have witnessed, in spite of the opinions of some that they want improved, that's what people tell me, it's not going to get better. But I stand here optimistically and say that I believe that we can remain optimistic and we can do better than what we've been doing. Let me say it again, we all must remain optimistic for the greater good. Again, it's my prayer, I don't know about the national action, it is my prayer that we all, everybody in the group, group by group, will perform a deep personal evaluation of our, watch this, words, motives, actions, and deeds. And be willing to acknowledge any wrongs, let me say that again, and be willing to acknowledge any wrongs. I'll give what you need, I'll give what you wrong, if you're right, you're right, if you're wrong, you're wrong. And then take the necessary steps to correct our actions and be reconciled to anyone we have offended. Let me translate that, if you've offended someone, please take the steps to be reconciled to them, admit you were wrong, and move forward in unity. I believe this can take place, if we focus on the one thing that we all have in common, and that is, we all want the best for the city of Flint. And concerned pastors for social actions, are willing to be a part of this transformation, is anything we can do, please let us know, we'd be happy to do it. Again, I want to say, thank you for accepting the awesome challenge of serving our city. May God bless you and our city. There.
Stephanie Hager, from Sixth Ward. I just want to speak for her. Um, I think, uh, right now from what I see, when you decide, there will be justice for the people of Flint. And it is our work here, so the people will lose. The people of Flint will be screwed, and they went with the art of guns. Flint must give more than bigger cities in the state because of the poverty here. Today I heard the people are the bad, that the people are being screwed, fights and it's getting sued. I went to a council meeting on Thursday. Only council, council persons brought up a bad fight they had on Monday before speaking, public speaking time, and another fight ensued, and the ladies that served in it have come out bleeding like a rose. I feel the residents are hard, and council arguing is more important than the residents. Moreover, there has been another blow up, and these actions are no accident at all. I believe these tactics are being used deliberately to get people's minds off the fact that the money has gone to five OVCs and special interests.
Amen. Amen.
And they are going, and our taxes are gonna go up, because Ashley, we're gonna have to have a tax capture. And people don't even know what tax capture means, but it's gonna be to go raise taxes on already struggling people. Time and time again, we have given tax abatements to companies that don't even stay here long enough till the tax abatements ends. See? Look at Diplomat Pharmacy, tax-free for fifteen years. Hagerman, who lives in Fenton, started the company. This company was appraised at four hundred thirty-five million and sold at fifty million. I found in a column that the poor pay the tax, and millionaires don't have to pay them. See there? Alright now. I would like to know why the city used our polite money to tear down buildings downtown that weren't even condemned to build apartments that are privately owned by the rich. See? I want to know why an apartment complex in Carriage Town was given a fifty-year tax payment. I want to know why people are stupid enough to give Ashley tax captures and an eighty percent tax break when this company on our wall says they will help people that don't want to pay taxes use their buildings. What are the people gaining from having them here? In my mind, this council is not helping the residents with their decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
But they are feeding them rich, as special interests.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm in Bay Harbor, and I'm calling on the, uh... Uh, you guys gave all this money to the land to provide, and to me, they haven't done anything. I mean, they might have heard about five or six houses, but the land on the north end is terrible. They were, they don't cut the grass right. I talked to the mayor, and the mayor has one goal, has a goal here, cut the grass. They cut the city side, the front, in two inches, like by two feet, off their property. The rest of it is just grown all up. You got grass, you got possum, you got coals, yesterday I seen a stump, you know, all of them. And you guys gave all this money to take care of life. I talked to Mr. Quincy, and Quincy told me what I already did, then what they gonna cut, just that little part there. And that's wrong, should have given them all of that money and not do anything. Okay? Now, I want to thank the S. Maynes for, because I talked to him about him, but I want to thank him for enlightening me on the water deal. You guys talk about this other money here, not gotten left the water bill alone. Nothing else been said, but he, I talked to him about it, and he told me what's going on, and they, so again, they trying to get it worked out. So with that, I want to thank him for that. And, um, got one more thing over here, University over there, you know, they building those nice apartments over there. You know, which is nice, okay, but C.H.S. is moving from that area. So what about the people that goes over there and get their shots? And, you know, people have mental problems and all of that. They moving that place way out there, I believe, off of Crystal Road, and, uh, Benton. How are those people supposed to get over there today? What Cameron is doing, helping them move, so they don't, those people walking around that area. And I don't know who's the councilman over there, but I believe they should check into it and see what, what they gonna do about that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brett.
Uh, please, my honor, um, could, uh, please, if you'll silence yourself, please, please silence yourself. According to council rules, all cell phones are supposed to be silenced in the council chamber during the council meeting. It can be a meeting as well, thank you. Proceed.
Hi, my name is Raphael Reed, uh, thirty-four thirty-seven East Hampton Drive, in Flint, Michigan. Um, I come before the council, I agree with you, I am from, I am a pastor of Mount Carmel Church of Flint, Michigan. And I am executive director of the Janine K. family, Family Life Center. I try to stay out of council, public visits on purpose. Um, but recently, my church, my center, and my name has been dragged down to council. So I want to just be here for clarity on today, and especially when considering the resolutions and the art of funding that our company or our organization asks for. Uh, I want to start with the allegation that any member of this council called me or threatened me to do anything in my organization, that is false. I'm gonna say it again, the deal has never called me. I'm gonna say it again, Liddell has never called me, no one has ever called me, threatened me. I am not for, for against any council member. My congressman Eric Bates, I love him. I'm not here to put him out here. What I'm saying and suggesting to you guys is that is fraudulent. Someone said that our organization illegally put Beverly Dix out of our Kennedy Center on threats and allegations of what had happened. That is extremely false as well, extremely false. I want to make sure that that goes on record. I want to make sure that I have not been intimidated. No one has done anything to our organization. Our center has stood for economic development in this city for over forty years. We've housed several programs, as far as Y U C A, uh, safe places. We also have entrepreneurial opportunities and everything else within our city limits. That's what we believe in, economic development, education, safe place for children, and we're trying to add that opportunity to our discussions. So, um, we, we don't really get into political jargon. It was alleged that something was happening in my Kennedy Center that I didn't know, not know anything about. Petitions went out, um, to, to get rid of one of our council members. I did not agree with that, nor did I authorize that. So in hearing about that, it is our decision to have to terminate a relationship that has nothing to do with anybody from here or anywhere else, uh, threatening our organization. That is just something that we don't believe in and we don't stand for. And that was my, that was my statement today. I want to let, um, Councilman Mays know, I apologize maybe for ignorance, I did not get, you know, my resolution, but it's definitely not because I'm trying to do anything to put you out or link in with that. That is not my, my plan. I want to stand so that the truth could prevail. Amen.
All right.
Thank you Pastor Reed. Anyone else would like to speak?
My name, my name is Sam Melo. This is my hometown. I live in Detroit. A lot of these, I've been getting funny arguments, someone I've been watching, Liddell Lewis, Quincy Murphy, I heard dresses with y'all, and even Puff. I have my teenager kids, and I'm gonna get everybody here and watch these videos of y'all. You guys pick on certain people, but you look there, you watch, the name was that you wanna kick out this lady. But when evil worthy do something out of control, you never want her, I can pull up every video that you been doing. And then you say you care about Flint. How, when I watch your videos, then if you didn't vote for nobody, you junkie. If you drink water, you junkie. I said my grandkids, and my kids see that. That is very ignorant. So we know you're not for us. So if you need to be removed, you should just go and resign on your own. And then you put out senior citizens in a war that needs your help, and you have a police officer remove her. That's wrong. You don't care about Flint, evil worthy, you don't either. All you do is type on your thing when people talk. Then when they say the wrong thing, you wanna address it, and you don't never interrupt her and give her no warning, but you always wanna pick on them. And, um, Jared, out of school, how, um, Tanya Brown, you always picking on them, and then this new lady, she just went to click. She really don't know what she doing. She looked down, even tested each other, 'cause you, her, y'all whispering, you whispering to him. And you tell the council members that they not supposed to talk when they speaking, you always making conversation with, um, Mr. Murphy. You whispering, you talking, you interfering. And that's the rule that you set. And then evil worthy, you gotta get away with everything. You act like you don't see them, like you're interfering with disgusting rocks. You didn't say nothing to her. You need to be equal up in here. If y'all not gonna be equal and care about Flint, then y'all get the hell out of Flint. Don't back up to hell for it. For real, because I'm telling y'all, y'all is ignorant. The kids behind us is coming behind us. If we don't show them how to do nothing against Flint, they watching, yo, you keep on your eyes up, that's all you do. Every time we in these meetings, and we watch you roll your damn eyes up because somebody telling you the truth, you took the money. You took the money. Y'all should be accountable, because if it was anybody else, him, Tanya, or any of them had took that money, you guys would have been in this water and would have took them apart. They didn't rest on, y'all didn't even afford Jersey, Earl, I'm Eve, her. She lies so much. You got moved from heaven to school for a race line on that too. You keep on your eyes up, baby girl, 'cause you can threaten me, I hate you. I made you know, all you do is roll your eyes when people talking. You ignorant, and you say on your video, if they drink water from Flint, you junkie. It's all wrong. You need to remove yourself automatically. And be fair, you wrong this here, you always picking on here.
Thank you. Any others want to speak?
Threaten people, threaten their partners. You'll get yours.
Next man, please.
Let me start by saying nineteen sixty-eight, the phrase, we should overcome. Two thousand twenty-three, we still saying we should overcome. Let me say this, in church, we don't tell you how to preach. Our young streets is totally different. Once you get out of here, you leave that robe and everything else behind. When the pastor, when Liddell cussed Pastor Thompson out, it wasn't a press conference. Evil called Tanya and Jared ghetto, it wasn't a press conference. To leave, uh, well, I can't call names by far. Everybody in that press conference with Liddell is saying. Y'all saying. Just like Richard White told me that three of the pastors that was on the call that went against the Ed, uh, School Board because the School Board was trying to kick mine out for not taking the schools. Richard White told me that all three, all five of them was on his payroll. I call y'all political prostitutes. And I would say it in your face. And I don't give a damn. I'm a hell, Mr. Fighter, Councilman Fighter, a coward, I have a jackass, a weak board. If I see him doing wrong, I engage it to him. What happened the other day, Councilwoman Lewis took advantage of our opportunity along with Christopher Martin. Took advantage because of simple fact that five votes was gone, because of the opera funds. The other pastor that just came up here, someone said that you put him out because Liddell Lewis said that. Well, Liddell Lewis said that. Even if you put her out because of her past petitions, it's still her personal thing. If she's not doing it in your church, I don't care if she wasn't signing them in your church, you could have gave her one. It's still, Liddell Lewis came to you, Liddell Lewis came to you. And then all of a sudden, fifty dollar dollars for Pastor Reed pops up. All of a sudden, it pops up. I'm not gonna sit up here and say a phrase to say the things about pastors or anybody else, because once you come behind that bull pit, you are in elected or political arena. We can talk about you. I'm not talking about your preaching. I'm talking about your politics, and it's not personal. Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Good evening, from the outside, and I'm the questioner. Uh, due to charter ten readings, and we all know that these meetings get hot. We all know that these meetings sometimes get personal. And I don't understand why so many adult people are here that haven't learned that lesson week after week after week after week after week. There's so many things to say on so many different sides, and I'm not even trying to choose one. Um, I was one of those people that did stand up at the news conference with Liddell Lewis. And reason being, and Mr. Fighter, I've never had a chance to be hold a lot of conversations throughout this project. In twenty twenty-three, one, a European person refers to an African American of personal color as a monkey. It has a racial connotation to it. Like I said, I'm not talking to the intent of what you said, but what is said and what is done is done now. I don't know if there was any apologies or a personal conversation with you guys after that, but we already have so much racial tension inside this council chambers that we don't need anymore. And just like Mr. Bates wants to stand here in front of where I'm talking to the podium, is just another show of ignorance inside of this council. So I just want to make it clear that we have to do something to gain control. We talking about the same stuff over and over and over every single week, y'all crying about the same stuff. If y'all can't do something to get yourselves outside of this public and get it together, maybe, maybe all y'all do need to go. Maybe, God bless you, Kat, that you just got here. But I'm saying that we cannot, as grown people in this community, get over these stupid personal issues. If you cannot be an adult and take somebody to the side, and if you need a referee there between the two of you, get one. I'm tired of hearing every single meeting, twenty, thirty, or hour or more about complaints about each other. Complaining about each other for whatever reason is not moving the city forward. So I don't know what it's gonna take to really, really get it together, not black against white, adult professional people for this city. That's what I want to know. Because I am dissatisfied with my representation, and that's why I'm doing something about it. But you all have got to find some kind of way, I don't care who I have to bring in, or we need to bring in a legal team to deal with the council, to pull y'all together, get some counselors, get some therapists, give whatever we need to do to stop this nonsense. And y'all sick of it, and I'm sick of it too, and so many other people are sick of it. Pointing fingers and bashing each other, it's never gonna get y'all nowhere. And I hope y'all have a good evening. I hope we can keep some decorum. I hope we can keep some professionalism and be adults in this chamber. Clear with Flint, Flint residents, uh, repeating the presentations that we have done.
Pardon me, please hold me, Mr. Flint.
Please stop my time.
So it would, we will have ordered the chamber. If we are having this order in the chamber, the officer will be called, you will be given a warning, and you may be actually, so let's please, let's have the form and order in the chamber. So you will not be removed by an officer on your second warning. Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Flint.
Okay, I'm here to ask for the council to make a motion and pass a resolution to designate sixteen million additional dollars for home repairs. And we have the location, and this is about the sixth time. And as much as you all argue among yourselves, you find a way to take care of the well-heeled and well-connected corporate people. You got along to give Ashley capital. You got along to give community first, fifty years' time. You get along for some things. You do get along. But not for the stuff that matters to us. All right, so for the sixth or seventh time, we want a motion and a resolution to have sixteen additional million dollars for rehabilitation and home repair. Only in the process, you all allocated the land bank for tearing down blight, and you played the blight card. You played different hands to protect the, the well-connected. You played the blight card for land bank. You played the jobs card for Ashley Capital. They played their cards. Where's the people card? And again, we understand, and we don't know all the rules and the ins and outs of things, but you all have found a way to do what you wanted to do, not in our interest. But we understand this, and we say this again. There's only one entity, government entity, that stands between the opera money and the people, and that's you. If we don't get our money, that's your fault as a council. And you can't come back and say, well, I didn't vote for it, that's irrelevant. Get it together and get us our money.
All right. My name is, uh, Rick Jones, and Ms. Claire, Eric did make the motion, so they need to just move a little bit. We've been asking y'all a long time, a lot of suggestions, telling y'all, I remember a time when Quincy was acting dumb, like he couldn't. Can you make a resolution? Oh, the mayor can't, can we? Come on, man. You can do it over here. Ben told y'all, do it. Excuse Ben May with Eric, say this again, I've said this for so many months, I'm tired of saying it. But he made a resolution trying to pay five thousand dollars to every, uh, city employee. Some of y'all ought to know on that. Most of y'all didn't. Nationals will read and laugh in before they know it. Now, sixteen million, I'm gonna say this again, if you gave land bank, uh, you want somebody to come in so he can give land bank sixteen million, fifteen million to do some demo. Why you can't do the same and no people stay in and move they houses? Really? Now, Ms. Lewis, you have stated more than one time that you are a part-time councilwoman. We don't need in the second ward, a part-time councilperson with a full-time heart full of hate and hatreds.
That's right.
Yeah, we don't need that.
That's right.
Every citizen from the second ward that come up here, you do not know how to address. And your Facebook game, stop. You sell Facebook. I'm telling you that as a friend, you're not winning anything. And I've been screenshotting everything you've been saying about me, even though you got me blocked. So, get it together. The people, now let me tell you something about the petition. Ninety-nine percent of the petition is the residents in the second ward. And a thousand of them don't want you in that seat. So whatever happened with that other little one percent, you know, the little technical things that may keep you in that seat, remember, a thousand representatives holders in the second ward don't want you there. So no matter what happened, no matter what the results is, and let me say something about Ms. Biggs, from what Mr. Arthur Wilson said, is very coincidental, and very coincidental.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Reverend Biggs. The three of you, I never had anything against you, but you began in the elevator with me, you, and Quincy, Eric. And you stayed with me, you know, if you knew me, you would have acted in my direction. One way. So after you said, I only have to say, your food is sad, and I told you what I said. You came back to me and you said you wish you could fuck me. One thing about me, I do not lie. Then I know you went to Pastor Reed because of the mere fact Pastor Reed told me to get me and you together to apologize. I don't need your apology. I don't. I pray for you. I don't need your apology. And then he said, uh, they trying to come after me about my taxes. Come on. Why I don't charge taxes on food? Whenever you ready, come and get me. Because I can take you to my county at any time of the day. And like I say, I was born with you to fucking petition. I went out there. Evil worthy, she like pancake meat and sausage. It's so easy to get. I got three hundred cigarettes in less than a week and a half. See, I don't need to buy something. Look, look on your shoulder, baby, cause you got something. Y'all have a good day.
I wasn't know the same thing I've been asking you since I've been down in Buffalo, Washington. The turkeys have got some of their money. How the McFlint residents got none of their money?
Right, you gotta ask.
What do you guys know about what's going on with the McFlint, uh, Washington? And when will some of the residents get paid? There's nothing, putting down four seventy bad on the water tower state, McFlint's wrong. What is McFlint's wrong about? I come down and think of y'all, y'all need to tell me something McFlint's wrong about. How y'all wanna mug each other over stupid stuff? So what is McFlint's wrong about, maybe this is why we ain't getting no water money? How you guys don't let it go and concentrate on operating, it's losing water under the rug, y'all. Bell went up.
Good afternoon, my name is Candace Vernon. I sit on the board for the Mount Carmel class, first lady, pretty famous person. Um, so a couple of things I can say that, uh, I just wanted to reiterate on. The Art Recalls, was there not an application to apply for the Art Recalls? Or was there not a deadline for the Art Recalls to determine? Yes, there was, we just got to commit our deadline, so as far as something just popping up to pop in, doesn't work like that, in this mind's understanding, doesn't work that way? It don't just pop up and have to apply for the grant, correct? I think you have to apply for the grant and you have a deadline to it. I don't know what you guys do, but just to reiterate that. As far as, I don't know what the relationship is with the Dale Lewis, Barry Biggs, the Pastor Reed. I believe that Mr. Lewis called Pastor Reed making implications, but what Pastor Reed did do was talk to this Barry about swashing whatever the beat is with you two. In fact, we were done, he tried to mediate before that. So I don't know what became of that. But what I will say is being down here in this meeting, how we conduct ourselves as a people of color? And how we sit and talk about people and insult, the insults that comes with it? How can we stand and do that and want someone? Rather than catching what's going on, and you're gonna insult me in my, my personal life? What does that have to do with being on this board? And things that's gonna happen for the senior Flint if you sit here and insult me? What are you expecting to happen on either end for the insults? What does that happen, what time are you wasting where people can be doing something productive?
That's embarrassing, because I'm on the second ward. Couple of things I want to say, but first of all, states, and I am speaking for myself, it has nothing to do with the representation of what it is at the nation of Islam. It states, none of us have permission to give a word if you have the nation of Islam to this task. So I want you all to know, this is me, not the nation. First of all, I'd like to say, um, in defense of Councilman Pfeiffer, I didn't take it personal. I didn't think he was speaking to anyone in particular. I thought he was speaking to the situation at hand at that time. It was talking about the Opera funds that was being spoken. He was speaking to that in the situation and the thing that was coming up was trying to deflect or take us off of the subject that was at hand, which was the funds that was going to be given to the different 501(c)(3)'s and the different organizations of some of the council members up there, and how they switched names on there, who was the board members, who was in charge. That's what I took it as, and I think as some of my friends in the audience have also stated, if he asked folks, "Nigga, what about a black woman?" Pfeiffer would have been in big trouble with me. I don't care if this being the Dale Lewis had problems, if we cool it. We, he would have had problems with me. I don't think and take it offensive for what he did say. I thought he was just speaking to the situation at hand, and it did seem shady. Now, just to prove the hypocrisy, I just spoke to Pastor Reed. I told him this is nothing personal toward him. But when he was speaking out, when Art Wilson was up here speaking, we never got a warning, he never got his warning. Nothing happened, but you let somebody else speak out, they get warnings. You should be fair across the board. Give warnings to everyone. It don't make a difference if they're your friend, your colleague, or whatever else. Give warnings to everyone. Let's be fair, let's be right about it. Let's talk about the Opera funds, I have to deal with what Claire McFlint said. She said, "Our homes are not in good repair." We know that the water crisis has poured up so many of the pipes inside of our homes. They're rusting out, the water is still not fixed. I still have to use whole house filtration system. Mine is going to not filter, but it has to be changed. Thank God that my cousin can come over and change it. And when he had to change it before he changed it, my hands break out, still in rashes. We talking about nine years in, and I'm still getting rashes? It's embarrassing to go out of town and have somebody ask, "Have you ever fixed the water yet?" Nope, and they ain't gonna fix it. If you start to dealing with what we dealing with here, and money, I'll say it, cause I got less than fifteen cents, money that's getting stolen by the Earth administration and some of the council people, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, uh, my name is Wayne Wilson Bay, uh, resident of Flint. Um, I would like to say to, uh, Mrs. Deaf, um, when I was listening to, uh, Ms. Tom, when I was listening to her, and she was telling me about her dad last week. And what she was saying was true, that, you know, if you was removed and they got things done. Why not come in here today, and why not come in here today and be wrong? You know, it says, in, in, in the Moorestown Simple America, says that the tender heart is turned from its purpose. So if you have a heart, then you should be able to listen to your other members and change. But not, not coming here with the same arrogant, uh, attitude because, I mean, what does it do? And I don't believe a people of color because God has made us. We're all just one race, one race, and that's the human race. So, the thing is, is that if they removed you in order to get things done, you don't have to come. But if you do show up, show up with the dignity of getting it done, of that particular position that you have. Because it does take pride in order to get things done. That's something that should be automatic. I wanted to, uh, address, I also wanted to do the thing about when she referred to you to give her a warning, you still didn't do it. I mean, it's almost as though you can't be told what to do. And that started with us as children, that we didn't be told what to do. And so when you ain't told what to do, we, we be reprimanded. And you should be reprimanded. Uh, the young lady, uh, Ms. Candace, uh, uh, I'm not saying I'm disrespecting something, but it's, it's kinda like, to me, it's like you're not really paying attention. Because when the situation was pointed out of her being wrong, you abstained, why would you abstain if something that was clear? It's clear. And the problem that I see that's going on is our territory voting that's going on from the very beginning, and it starts at the top with the mayor. Y'all always gonna have a cloud over this council meeting because of the fact that you're not really addressing the things that really need to be addressed and that's the concerns of a citizen. When those two children died in that fire, we still haven't done anything about it. We have not made the mayor accountable, we have not made the district attorney accountable. And when they take that fire, that fire, uh, officer who permitted that death, that's negligent. That woman came down, mother came down, and cried, and y'all have done nothing about it. It's always gonna be a cloud on the Flint because of that.
Good afternoon, council. Reverend Ryan is fifth ward. If he, if it's worth it. A lot of things, a lot to unpack. But I would like to see moving this council forward. Didn't get rid of her as a chair, uh, chair. It never works out. She ruled with the colleagues, she ruled with the audience, she upholds Eva Williams. She never say anything when Eva is giving people singers, mauling obscenities, cussing. She's our favorite pastime, is cussing, uh, her lover. She took a picture of me last week and posted it, and then it was captioned, "Who is this man?" I, Reverend Ryan, fifth ward. So you wanna address the elephant in the room, the monkey, or what? Whatever, yeah. That's it right there.
To the desired officer, Thomas Shore. My name is Reverend Frelon, Pharrell Phil Julian. Two fourteen East, Alaska. Four eight five, oh five. Long time resident of Flint, graduated from Flood Central nineteen sixty. As I sit here, and I lived down here before, this, I like to thank all the speakers that have come up and said what they had to say, and it's good to see a diversified audience out here. Instead of just picking on a couple of people. The Sunday School lesson this past Sunday, dealing with the accused and the accusers. And they were trying to entrap Jesus. And they bought a woman, caught him to act, but they didn't break the man. Jesus being wise and unwise, started writing in the dirt, and I'm paraphrasing. And when he got to writing in the dirt, all of those accusers were gone. And the accused was still standing there. And he asked the question, "Where are they?" They all left, from the oldest to the youngest. And it simply closes saying, "Those of us that haven't seen..." What he really said, "That those of you that haven't seen cast the first stones." Jews executed people by stoning, Romans crucified. But here we sit, every time we come down here, black and white, we working against each other. But who among you haven't seen? But he told the accused to go and send them over. In our charter, somewhere in there, and I got fifty-two seconds of real flair, there's an entity in there called the Abusmen. Some of you all refer to the charter and do this and do that, the charter says this and that, but you never say nothing about the Abusmen. That's an entity to have check and balance on the mayor and the council. And even give you the power to subpoena. You all have the power. All of these resolutions that are sitting there, unclaimed or unfinished business, it's your fault and then I will fault to let you do it. So dig in that charter and bring forth the Abusmen's check and balance. And I'm gonna close on this, when a pitcher throw a ball, the batter swings, the catcher gets the ball, but who determines if it's a ball or a strike?
My name is A.C. Dumas. I reside in the second ward. Not by choice, but by whatever they need. They rule us all around. First I want to address the question about a motion to the city attorney. This is Robert's Rules of Order. It said a motion must be seconded to bring it up for discussion. Seconding a motion does not mean you agreed with it. The chairman must hear a second or the motion is lost. Other words, whether you agree with the motion or not. If somebody says, "Motion on the floor, Mr. Platton," it has to be seconded. That's it, that's Robert's Rules of Order. Let me go about this, I don't want to forget this, that you have a resolution, I left my glass in the car. Lafayette, uh, Automotive, looks like it's, uh, two three eight nine two two. I ask y'all, send that back to fine in, or wherever, to make sure it's fair. You know the other, uh, property we had, y'all remember that other property? Do the same with this. Cause it's some slippery slipboard down here. Mr. Pfeiffer, and I'm like, uh, I represent A.C. Dumas. I'm not here representing NAACP. I represent A.C. Dumonts. Everybody knows me. I've been coming down these chambers longer than anybody in this room, over sixty years. Any of them. And Mr. Pfeiffer, if I even thought that you was calling a person of color out of their name, not even an elephant or monkey, whatever, out of their name. You know who the first one would have stood up? Me, and I look at my second warning, because the Dale Lewis gave me my first warning, before she asked the question, I just, she said, "Well, where are we at?" I said, "Well, you're there." And to me, "Mr. Dumas, that's your first warning." Pastor with respect to you, you came up here. She didn't give you a warning, I waited back there trying to help. So I'm in the second ward. And, you know, I'm gonna say this. Lots of folk misquote the Bible all the time. And when you misquote the Bible, you lying down. Cause you say if you add to it, or if you take it away, y'all don't wanna talk about it. Y'all get up there and say, "Well, the Bible said if you make one step, he'll make two." That ain't any Bible. Quit misquoting the Bible, lying on God, thank you.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Kenny, now I'm in the seventh ward. I've been coming here a long time, not as long as you. A.C. Dumas, I've been coming a long time. Mr. Pfeiffer, if I thought that you said that in anger, hatred, I would have took you aside and spoke to you about that. Cause that's me. And I think you know me well enough, that I would have been private, not in public, but I would have been private with you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, there's a lot of things I don't understand, and when I was running for this council seat, I said I had two ears and one mouth. That meant for me to listen, that meant for me to listen more than I talk. You see, he give you teeth that holds that tongue back. That is your guard, is your teeth. For lo and behold, we are on this council, and we want to let the world know who we are, and how bad we are, how much power we have. Your power is only for a short time, and you're gonna be gone, you will not be who you were. So please remember, that whatever you sow, so shall you reap. And we're gonna still be sitting here, waiting on the next group to come along. And we're gonna look at them, and we're gonna try and remember, not remember, exactly what we put out with, with you guys. And we're gonna try and remember, not remember exactly what we put up with, with you guys. But. I'm gonna still live in the seventh ward, cause I ain't go sell my house. I'm gonna still come down here. I'm gonna still be sitting here when all the people are gone. We shall survive you. We shall survive you. Thank you.
Hello, good evening everyone. My name is Danielle Dawson, I'm a long time resident. And I just wanted to come up tonight. Very seldom do I get an opportunity to come down to city council, but, um, I have been able to come down over the past couple of months. And I just want to say that if there's an opportunity for public comment to happen earlier in the, on the agenda, that would be appreciated. There is multiple times when the voice of the people are not able to be heard. You all, um, you go into just preliminary meetings. It should be very simple and it should only take a brief amount of time. But oftentimes, it takes all of the time. It takes an hour, hour and a half, two hours. And every time that you all do a point of order or request of information. And rightfully so, you have to do that, um, to get an understanding. But that takes away three minutes from the people. And people come down, your mothers come down, your time is taken away from their children. Um, fathers and mothers come down here, it's taken away from their families. People are taking time away from their job, if they work second shift or third shift. And when councils themselves, whether they have to give themselves a break because they're trying to stay warm or if they need a bathroom break. Or if, or if they just get upset, because you've seen it at times where some people got upset and they walked away. But if two or three people walk away at one time and then form is broken. Then all those people would have allocated time out of their schedule to take time away from their family, from their children, from work. And when we came down, uh, one time. There were mothers who came with us and they had to make arrangements for transportation. Bus passes and things of that nature. And then guess what, they weren't even able to speak during public comment. But all the council had an opportunity to speak for three minutes for everything that you all needed to say. But the voice of the people was not heard. So all I'm asking is that we consider the people in all that we do. So that the voice of the people is heard and we can move forward with the business at hand. Thank you.
Hello ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tommy Urban, I live with my family, we're all the way from Pompano Beach, Florida. Uh, the main reason we're here, my son is looking at further education, whether he be here in Flint or in Detroit. So we just wanted to get our hook on how everything going is right. I have been watching these meetings for years, well not years, but I've been seeing years of meetings. And I just want to say this, everybody forget about longevity, you gotta think about the kids, man. The decisions that we may now affect our kids twenty years from now. So we can't think about right now. You being selfish if you think about right now. Think about the plans that's being made for kids that grow. Like my son and other kids, that want to make something like themselves in the city of Flint. That's the only way we grow. Once again, this is my wife Danielle, we're in Urban. This is my son Jonathan. And it's nice to see everybody. And, uh, this is the council, man, we all adults. I work, I don't get to know everybody at my job, but I gotta do my job, I be fighting. I can't take care of my family. So just keep that in mind, man. Longevity, that's what counts, thank you.
I think God given us something for my people. But you know, I hear everybody talking, hear everybody screaming, hear everybody praying for us. I like Mike Chester Coe, I'm a business owner here in city Flint. And I don't like a lot of opinions, to understand. This world don't want us, most of us, all of us, and all of us. If we don't all take our personal business, put it to the side, and do what God calls to do today, we would better off. We don't want fingers at everybody else, that force put it back in ourself. Without we, don't start doing our job. We got the city so tore up that we can't make a change. We only got less than eighty dollars left to eat in city Flint. We got all this oil fund, all this money coming from, they talk about the water prices and the money and all that. What we have money here in city Flint, we want to provide, because we trying to figure out what we're gonna do with this part. Uptown development is beautiful, but the north of PM Town is towed down, wrecked from the top to the bottom. And I know the ninety-seven million dollars that we got. We taking these resident people in city Flint, fifteen thousand dollars upgrading the house, they blah blah. We have beautiful neighborhood. But we so far holding ourselves back, thanks for what we're doing for the people, but we hard on ourself. People young sitting on this council board, you guys can take your quaver, move out the way, and build a different plan together to do something for your city. If you guys can't do it, you guys just get your head down. Because we got young men, young women who going to college, high school, federal investment. Got development for this world. And we is crippling ourselves by not making the development come apart. The water price, they talking about the money that you guys got hid back, the life money and all that money, that money's finna spend. But the money you guys have in residence now, you got eighty dollars less than eighty dollars resident people. They provide five million three hundred sixty-two dollars to the federal average, fifty thousand people. All your people in city Flint, they love fifty, they good. Then you guys can come back if they good. Clean it up, build your resident homes, bring the residents back in city Flint. Right now we killing Flint, everybody moving on outskirts, it's eleven years for the people to sense solid foundation. If you guys can take off to this, yell it in your eyes, that season's in front of you, not behind you. Cause every damage you did yesterday is already done. What is y'all coming for to do today? Y'all here for your people or against your people? These people come here for a reason, they come here with resolve, they didn't come here all this bitter and hard. They come to find out what you have planned for the city of Flint. So far, all I see, we got uptown development coming up. But on a note, you go from Hamden, from Fifth Street all the way back, it's all towed down. He said he run the immigration, and I see you getting money over here for this. Parking lots getting fixed, buildings getting towed down. What about the rest of the city of Flint people? You guys give them some value, they look good, people come back. Your minds is not thinking that way. Business is struggling, y'all talking about water crisis. Every time they come up with a surgeon, "I can't get water, water, I gotta buy water." No one replace that money, that can go out of my pocket, it's my pocket. Get your case of water, I gotta replace.
Thank you sir.
Ask you guys, get your minds together.
Good evening, my name is Allison Montgomery Littlejohn. Um, I am a licensed social worker in the city of Flint. Advocate for the R S Kids Program Resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one. Flint families and residents are often labeled as resilient for their ability to bounce back from adversities. As a former resident of Flint, I can attest to this specifically from experiencing the unfortunate water crisis. From personal experience, I know that being constantly resilient is mentally, emotionally, physically, and economically draining. Opportunities of relief and ease are always welcome in pressing situations and circumstances. And I wholeheartedly believe that the R S Kids Pro- Program can bring financial ease. To families that are consistently revolving in the cycle of trauma and resilience. Excuse me. As a practicing social worker in Flint, poverty is one of the persistent social determinants of health that families face. For an impoverished family to have this financial opportunity, it can lead to a decrease in stress, depression, and anxiety. Which are also social determinants of health. Another positive outcome for Flint families is an elevation of self-esteem. Because they are now in the position of being financially abundant. This outcome can generate a download effect. That will consequently result in an improved economic status for the community of Flint as a collective. Now in regards to the statement that was made last week by a councilperson. Stating that the R S Kids Program is a form of welfare, I totally disagree. This statement is hypocritical. Specifically because we reside in a country where the government has gained its wealth. Off of the oppression of the Native Americans, the enslavement of Africans and black people, and other immigrant groups. And still, still to this day, gains is wealth off of underdeveloped countries. We need to normalize helping those in poverty to become economically abundant. And to maintain their abundance instead of normalizing the rich getting richer, or the half against the half ass. By supporting the R S Kids Program. This will ensure that at least some of the offer money will get into the physical hands of Flint residents and families. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak here? Anyone want to speak here?
Good evening council. My name is Paul Waring, I reside at five twenty-five Mason Street. If we always do. What we've always done. We'll always get what we always got. I want to tell you about two of my mentors, actually three. The first two are Ed and Urban Earl. These were one of my early bosses when I was sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old. They ran a grocery store on Second Street. Urban Eddie pulled me over one side and he said, "Paul. We have a rule here. We're gonna back you a hundred percent out of that counter. Somebody says you didn't give the right change, we're on your side. Rest assured, we count that register at the end of the night, if you're wrong, you're wrong, and we have to make some adjustments." They also told me, they said, "You praise people in public." I'm gonna repeat it again, cause I don't think many people know this. You praise people in public. And you punish them in private. That's the only rule you guys need. That one rule will squash everything. If we always do what we always done, we'll always get what we always got. My other mentor is my mother. And my mother said to me. If what you're about to say is designed to make someone feel bad. Or you feel better. Keep it to yourself. Who rules? If we always do what we always done, we'll always get what we always got. In all things purely social guys. We can be separate as fingers. Or we gotta be one. We gotta be one! We gotta be one. Like a hand in all things beneficial to our people.
Alright, then we enter, it seems that we don't have any more public speakers. Public speaking is... So since we got no more public speakers, public speaking is now closed. So now we're going to council and respond. Any council members who'd like to respond? Alright.
Yes, Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. President?
It's kinda hard to, it's kinda, it's, um, lights on, I'll sit here and push. Um, so first of all, I would like to thank all of the public speakers. Thank you for being engaged in the process. Thank you for, um, coming forward with your issues, concerns, um, opinions. Whatever you have come to us with, please understand that I've taken it all in. Um. Our L Mitchell, thank you for, um, bringing up the fact that this month, the month of September, is, um, sickle cell. National Sickel Cell Awareness Month. Um, and I want to leave you with one fact. One in thirteen African Americans carrying the sickle cell trait. So I just want to, and I think we have a resolution coming up, um, that talks about, um, sickle cell awareness month. Um, Pastor Harris, you are absolutely, um, correct. Right is right and wrong is wrong. Mrs. Bethany Harris, um, pastor. Um, I would like to sit down and discuss and talk with you about, um... About my vote, I voted in favor of the two or three or four housing developments. Um, in the fifth ward, and particularly the one in Kirat Town. Please keep in mind that throughout the U.S. We are in a, um, affordable housing crisis. So it's not just here in Flint, it's all over. So we must, um, be able to provide affordable housing. But I would, I would like to sit down and, um, discuss that with you. Alright.
Um, anyone else want to, or just ready to come to the panel?
Madam Chair. Thank you. I would think all the, um, residents who came, um, and it is difficult sometimes sitting through our meetings, it's very true. And I hate that we cannot come together as a body. And it's some things that we could do better though, absolutely. To all the pastors, Pastor Harris, I appreciate you reaching out to me and speaking with me, uh, today, this afternoon. And Pastor Thrall Kel and Pastor Reed. I would like to exchange numbers so you and I can have a personal conversation with each other. Because economic development, we do happen, that's, that's what I care for, we have to happen. But I want to, I like to have transparency, so whatever I talk about, I talk about it here, I don't do that in a meeting deal. I do want to speak to Candace in regards to the process of our, it has not been transparent. We did not, we did not know that some of our members had had ARPA applications, they had not disclosed them. We also did not know that, um, the deadline, the deadline was reopened for one and then it was put for to be determined until last week. And so we, we did not know, because the name was taken off and then it was put back up. So there is some questions. Also, we had to subpoena to get the application, so that we know actually who submitted them, when they submitted them. And we had to do that by a vote of five to provide transparency. We should have had to have done that. It was also taken by Councilwoman Priestley, that this administration had kept the ADHOP committee, or specifically to Herschel speaking herself, in the dark. And too many things were secretive. So we do have to work through this process together. But we want to make sure that everyone gets it and reaches the hands of those that need it. So sometimes we look at, what are we fighting for? I'm a fighter for the money to get to residents, that is my fight.
Anyone else would like to, or just ready to come to the panel? Madam Chair, it's time for it.
Um, so much was said, but I just want to say thank you to Pastor Reed. Um, I like what you have to say, and I can tell your heart is trembling. And, um, I'm glad you came to clarify what was said. So many things get said constantly. And there's no need for it, there's no need to sit here on council and blame others for things that happened not on this council. Um, and that's what has taken up the majority of the time, um, since I've been on this council for six years. And it's unfortunate. Um, many of us are here and we just strictly want to get right to the business. We want to discuss, um, these policies. We want, and not people. We want to discuss policies and not people. And many times, even when we're discussing a policy, we're talking about people. Um, many of the people that we have cut up. Many, um, do not come to these meetings, so we're seeing a small percentage of people in the entire city at the meetings. Um, and it's just that they don't want to come because it's so dysfunctional. And, um, I really encourage them to come. Cause I don't want them to sit here and listen to what I have to listen to. It's hard enough for me to hear the name-calling, just the horrible remarks. It's hard enough for me to hear the name-calling, just the horrible remarks, um, just to get through business. Um, the ARBA dollars haven't been spent. It worries me that this council will not get it together to give the people the money that they deserve. Um, that's what I care about, uh, and that's what some of us care about. But then these meetings get hijacked into something else. Um, and, and it's sad because I'll say it every time, Flint deserves better.
Anyone else want to speak in a council response? Anyone else want to speak? All right, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the speakers that, um, spoke. And, um, this is one thing I said and I said before and I still continue to say. You hear, um, people in the audience happening and making sarcastic comments towards one of our colleagues if they don't agree with something that we say up here. You hear the colleagues, them, ourselves, um, beat up on one another and then I, I... The other day I watched, uh, 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 a brief podcast with my colleague and majority of it was talking about another colleague. So I said, "How do we move forward using the platform to talk about one another?" And I was waiting to hear them talk about policy and how we move this city forward. We've got so much stuff that we need to be moving. And I always say, if we don't be careful, because I have, my, my family came down here one day after some allegations were made about me messing with young boys, that wasn't true. And they were highly upset about that. And when people hear you out, the false narratives about the people who they have supported and anybody who knows who not done work hard in this community for years. So a lot of times when people, um, they came down here with Pastor Harris with shirts on calling me and Councilwoman Liddell Hackett, uh, hey, neighbor, uh, black or whatever they call us, they never had to sit here and watch them. And what I'm saying to Mr. Murphy, that we need to be careful because that stuff escalated. We got my peoples that, that, you know, love and support the work that I've been doing and you got a whole bunch of people that it don't matter what I do, they still not going for it. That's okay. But I'm going to make the best decision that I feel I need to make to move this city a bit forward and sometimes you can't help it, but some people.
I want to say this, I appreciate everybody that's down here, but I've been around council over thirty years, been on the council team. We've been paid to the mighty past under the council group, uh, Pastor, we could address them and take care of their business one by one. A council back, this council has never seen us interact properly like we used to complete their people's business and public comment because they're working under bogus rules. Even at the beginning, when you send a discussion out and that's been all in press conferences voted down, the only way we can discuss the Pastor Harris, we can't meet three and four of us outside of the council meeting to discuss certain things. It has to be done in a meeting that's called. I'm glad that you're agreeing to have dialogue. Pastor at Mount Carmel, um, we need a meeting and we had a meeting to discuss ARBA funds and folks that show up. We need two or three more of them to get this money right. I welcome y'all from Compton, Mill Beach, Florida, um, we just got tried with, with the council. I don't buy into people that want to come down here. I don't buy into what Ms. Murphy says, I see no want them to come. I do want them to come. I don't just want pastors, I want the whole churches to come. And I want to discuss business and I want this council to make the rules that we can have. Even discussion. We get paid well and I don't care if we have to meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday or Saturday. Let's take our time, get rid of these bogus rules and get the work done.
Anyone else would like to comment during council response? Okay, so seeing none, I will go ahead and I just want to speak. I would definitely thank everyone for taking their time out to express their concern. I wanted to address a few things. One thing that I don't do and I won't do, I won't use my legacy seat for slander, misinformation. And unfortunately, I will stay on the record that they don't like me. And then, um, that's held down on her shelf, her whole podcast, she used to talk about me. Not the benefit of the word, not the... Please pause, hold that. Thank you. Um, ma'am, that's your first warning?
I don't give up no warning.
That's fine. So that's your first.
I don't say, I ain't got no first.
Okay, Ms. Decas, could you move this forward? The audience member out. So as we... So as we move forward, this is what I'm saying. Council members and all anyone that like you are encouraged to stay as long as I present this before.
You don't know what it's like.
Uh, excuse me, um, Mr. Woodson, that is... As you were saying, it is difficult to speak. The public has their time at the legislature, now it's council response time. When you speak out loud and it disrupts a meeting that is out of order. So moving on to following the rules that this body have elected, we can't use our seat for slander, misinformation. Unfortunately, when I left the meeting last week, well, for the last meeting that we had, unfortunately colleagues were stating...
Request for information.
What, what, uh, what is your question?
Did you pull up me and Jared Griffith card and pay your shirts?
No, 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 I don't care. Let's not, let's not use requests for information illegally, okay? This is what we're talking about. Again, this is no...
Point of order. You shouldn't say that like that. You should just say, "What's your point of order?" My point of order is, this is response to public comment. You opened the door talking about other stuff that really wasn't public comment. So you can stay like the pastor.
So as I begin, continue to speak, I was just addressing what was said by colleagues and audience members. But when I have the floor, I continue to get bound harder with requests for information, points of order, which remains the meeting to make me look like an incompetent chair. When I hear you, uh, legacy seat for slander, misinformation, colleagues said that Liddell Lewis interacted with Pastor Reed to get Ms. Beverly or Beverly removed. Not so. He spoke on and said not so. I don't even know Ms. Beverly. First time I met her, she came to the legislature and said she had papers on me.
Time up, time up.
We will go ahead and close public speaking and we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the consent agenda which is separated?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve consent agenda.
All right, is there any support? Supported by Mr. Murphy.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes, I'd like to separate 230281.1, 230328, and to pick her up if she can.
All right, any more separation? All right, seeing that we have none, we will go ahead and, um, vote on the consent agenda. Roll call, Madam Chair. Ms. Pickard?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no, that the consent agenda passes. So after our first, um, separation, resolution 23028... Um, Ms. Murphy?
I am, uh, disagreeing with the council.
All right, so there's a motion to move the resolution to council, any support? Supported by Councilwoman Shep. Any discussion? Ms. Murphy?
I'd like to invite Dr. Mona to the podium. Um, if there's anything she would like to add about this program, about Flint.
The time is starting.
Well, we came to the opportunity to address, so again, regarding ARX kids. Um, I just spent the entire day in Klenick of all the partners working to take care of my baby. And I have a four-week-old coming home these days, his name was Destin. And I have this little baby in my, in my arms and he was a little premature and his weight was kind of touch and go. We were talking about how to explain a lot, um, how the baby gave away. And I was telling the mom, I, I was apologizing to the mom that we didn't have ARX kids yet. And I was telling her, I was asking her what she could do if we had ARX kids. If during pregnancy, she got fifteen hundred dollars during pregnancy. And once that baby was born, they got five hundred dollars a month. Every month that baby was born, you're in the page. And the mom said, "I wish I could just stuff him back inside me and deliver him in January because I wish I could get ARX kids now. I wish I had prescription to lift my baby and my family out of poverty so that I could provide my family everything they need." And every family needs different things. They don't need a bath mat or house repairs now. Every family has different needs and this is unconditional money to lift the poorest city out of Michigan, to lift our children out of poverty. So as a nation, the numbers came out last, last week. As a nation, we dou- more than doubled our rate of child poverty. We went from five percent to over twelve percent as a nation because we stopped the expanded child tax credit as a nation. So as a nation, we went from the lowest level of child poverty to a twelve percent rate of child poverty. The numbers for Flint came out last week too, for child poverty. Flint's child poverty rate soared to sixty-nine percent. Almost seventy percent. Seventy percent of our kids are growing up without the resources they need to be healthy and successful. This is not, this is not about individual choices. This is about policies. This is about how you have the power to lift our families up and we can do this. So ARX kids have started to disrupt this cycle of maternal inequality, to address maternal infantilities, maternal morbidity and mortality, immaturity, full birth weight, and all these disparities that play our children, our communities in these racial and geographic disparities. Communities, African community have been using ARBA dollars to do this. I'm going to list some of those. The Chicago Resilient Communities Cash Assistance Pilot, Newark Movement for Economic Equity, Cook County Progress, the Basic Income Guarantee Pilot, Los Angeles Economic Assistance Pilot, City of Evanston Guarantee Income, Chicago Resilience Fund, White House Network. All of these communities are using ARBA dollars to do something similar to what we are trying to do. They are using public health emergency dollars to address a public health emergency, childhood poverty that was exacerbated by the pandemic. Flint was hit disproportionately by COVID. These are ARBA dollars. This is a way to address that public health emergency. When ARBA dollars are in the mix of cash transfers, it allows us to unlock protections. We have raised, in about seven months, it's been unreal. We have raised about forty million dollars. And I've heard council members say, "We don't need to give you money. You already raised so much money." The state gave us sixteen and a half million dollars. They only need Flint. Others would be like, "Why aren't you giving us money?" They're like, "No, we're going to do this in Flint because we believe in Flint. Flint needs this and if Flint can do this, we'll share it to other places." But ARBA dollars need to be in the mix because when ARBA dollars are in the mix, when these public health emergency dollars are in the mix, it protects benefits. It allows us to protect things like SNAP and WIC and Medicaid and childcare services and housing vouchers and SSI allows us to protect them so they are not declared as income. And that is because of the public health emergency. So yes, we have raised money. We still need about fifteen million dollars. My initial request for ARX kids through the ARBA application process was for five million dollars. We still need fifteen million dollars to, to make, to be able to do this for the next five years. Thank you for your time. I hope that we have your support.
Thank you, Dr. Mona. And that's your call.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May?
Yeah. Dr. Mona.
Mona's line.
Did I say it on the...
Set a great bonus script.
You know, I met you during the wire press. And I sat in the therapy hospital conference room when you first made your first, I can't put it straight. And then that statement stepped out to me was when you thanked the activists, both like myself and others who had big names and names below y'all that gathered by our per se. And that stepped out to me, that's how I met you. And ever since then, you've been giving all kind of attention for the work that you did. Now I'm more, now you hear the voice dealing with this resolution for a billion dollars. And prior to you coming with this resolution for a billion dollars, I had seven hundred residents fill out what's called a initial request form for help for their homes and businesses. And certain fellows on this council and his administration admire thinking in order. They were regular people with their names. They didn't have Dr. Mona, Hannah, Tisha, however you spell it. Dr. Mona, you said I didn't say, they didn't have your reputation. They didn't have a reputation of the land. So where I stand on this now, we call a couple meetings that the majority of my colleagues didn't show up. And we've been articulate, trying to say we want a working session. We want to budget this money and we want to spend it and we want to get it out. But we want to know what we got and what we got left. And we even then went to the point where we started subpoenaing people and more documents to see what's going on. So I have no problem with the proposal. But I do have a problem with detaching into your mouth as we try to get people to cooperate on the council and the administration as we try to dish out this money. See, I know if something is timed sister. I don't know, um, when I looked at this program, it includes some language about Michigan State. If this resolution correct? And it also includes something about five hundred dollars a month per household of pregnant people, correct?
No, it's fifteen hundred dollars for a pregnant mom.
Fifteen hundred, well, what is five hundred? But hold up, when you said no... But hold up, when you said no, so what is the five hundred for twelve months?
That's for a one baby.
Okay, and that comes in a household, right?
Right.
So why did you say no?
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
I didn't speak on the fifteen.
Five hundred dollars.
I said it's something in there about five hundred per household.
Per.
Right?
It's five hundred dollars.
And you said yeah, after the baby is born, five hundred a month for twelve months.
Seventy-five hundred total.
Whatever the total, we got this program, five hundred a household, you said no, but then I said yeah.
Five hundred dollars per month.
Per household?
Yeah.
For twelve months?
Right, the policy and.
See, I understand. That's what I was saying, when I said it. I was thinking you said no, and then you said fifteen. But either way, it's recorded in some time as a miscommunication. So my thing is this, when these proposals come to me, whoever's recommending them, whether it's a twelve member board that we got in court, whether it's Miss Cynthia, his staff, the buck don't stop eating. A council buys votes and more is under determined. And so we sometimes get it last, but we don't get it for pre-polling. It's the stupidest rule I've ever seen when you have to spend days and hours of, you can't even discuss it. Thank you so much.
I can't even wonder, would I just be?
You're welcome. Yes.
You want me to, Ms. Burke?
Thank you so much. Um, so for the, um, the years. And my colleague, uh, for. I, I hear what you guys are trying to do, but there are so many other, um, partners. And we have to, and I know.
Don't get all that shit going up there like that.
Hey, y'all's per se. Um, I know in doing AR, that I've spent a lot of time on, working and really about AR. There, um, we have a lot, and we would drive, we would probably turn that grass. So I was hoping that when we won't run by, we'll get the still, um, for the partial recreation at the beginning of the year. And I got, um, the administration, Roy and Chad and Nancy, uh, so it was over. So Esteban chose a resolution to bring to city council so we can get rolling on that. Now, at the end of summer, that resolution's still not here. You have, um, you know, people have been coming. I, I, Mark Levine for House of Esther, even part of you coming to city council. Or she been coming to city council since, um, Karen Weaver was the mayor. Advocating for St. Agnes. To do, um, shelter and support for women and. Between administration and the council.
Get away from my camera.
She took, she got here. When they came down to try to give any kind of help to move. I would like to make a motion to take five hundred thousand dollars, it is one million dollars, and move the house.
Too late. There is, um, a motion for, to pay five hundred thousand dollar. From our key proposal and give to the House of Esther. What? All right.
Madam Chair.
Oh. Our decision was on the floor, gave House of Esther five hundred thousand dollars over the proposed one million dollars in line, give on that before. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair. Yeah, I second the motion.
She gave the one. She gave the one, and she pulled it out.
And Madam Chair, now I'm the last one to vote.
Um, um, please hold, Mr. Murphy, have a word.
Have a word.
Hold a word.
What is the point?
Madam Chair, I don't care if you have a word first, but when I, you asked, when I say Madam Chair, and I second the motion, and you say it's been moved and seconded, and then I say Madam Chair, and that's how I get the vote. But since you want to go, go to Mr. Murphy, but, you know.
Thank you, Mr. May. So, Mr. May, you have a word. Please proceed.
Like the market.
Hold on, hold on.
One of your things.
I already just said, you just grew up. You just said, oh, they shouldn't have provided, can't try to give, provide this stuff, and I'm wondering why they made some kind of professional money.
No, let's be clear, um, two of the board, and Mr. May, let's say, you may.
Oh, stay there.
Go organize, go ahead.
And this, this resolution, um. This resolution that I put together, um, and I'll send to, um, the vein that my colleague will get into them, I think is, um, appropriate enough to give, share with my colleagues. And this is the city council recommended, amended, and following one million for Michigan State University, and creating and establishing funding for up to five hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, to House of Esther to do all things necessary to purchase and obtain acquisition of the St. Agnes property. So, um, what this is, will allow them the opportunity to, um, purchase the St. Agnes, um, property. And I know they was raising funds to, um, purchase the St. Agnes, um, property. But what this right here is five hundred thousand dollars, and it could be from the same account, two eight seven seven two nine one zero zero eight zero one point zero zero zero. What this will do will allow them the opportunity to obtain that property and use up whatever they need to do to fix up some of the, um, damage that has been done to the St. Agnes property. And then with the funding that they have been raising, they could take that funding and reallocate towards the renovation. And they could start one building at a time, and then they could work that building and work with that sort of building. So I'm not against, um, you guys getting funding. But I look at those who have, um, came before city council, who have been advocating, and she got a similar project. Um, you guys could serve as the fiduciary, Michigan State University, some, just still. If, if that's not the case, you can, they can figure it out. But this thing to do all things necessary to, um, and I see you shaking your head, and that concerns me. Because we got minorities that's been out here with nonprofits that's been advocating and trying to get funding. And my heart goes out to Divine, and all the hard work and the dedication in Congress hours of city and city council. Hoping that she can get council to approve, they'll get acquisition then to go from, um, buying the building from seventy-three thousand to a hundred and thirteen thousand to four hundred and some thousand dollars. This could probably reach, uh, someone like them that may have to struggle to try to figure out how. This is an opportunity that we gonna give you a million dollars, um, and you already got funding. In addition to what we already maybe allocating towards you, why not share it well? And five hundred thousand dollars go to you guys, and five hundred thousand dollars go to House of Esther, and we all we. Because what this community has said countless times, and have came to city council and hit this podium, is that they want an opportunity, they want us to share an opportunity for people like House of Esther to be able to make moves and help develop on the north side of the cliff. This way, now it's up to us as a council to see what we go do. We advocated, we talked about, um, House of Esther. And I, I'm not against funding, use the money, but what I am against is the, um, House of Esther advocates who have came to city council countless times and have advocated to get some help, to help with, um, the House of Esther, and, you know, they have done great work. And I did see the video, uh, um, Tanya, I think we did a video showing that somebody brought them to the building and just messed up. And that's very unfortunate that, that happened. And I think this right here will help move the ball forward to help them be able to get the building, acquisition of the building. And to, if they got a little change left, maybe they can fix some rusting windows and doors. Uh, maybe they can just front it or whatever, and then they can take the other money that, um, people have been wanting, and they can use that going towards fixing the public stuff, making it a more nice looking or whatever. But if we gonna give a million dollars, why not share it and give some to House of Esther, who have been coming down here for years. No, I'm not advocating, I'm just, I'm not against the, um, ARX kids. And you guys want to break out. But what I'm against is seeing Levine and the House of Esther, and many council, city council, and this council. And now is the time for us to, um, show up and see what we, um, what we need to do. Thank you, and, um, that motion, I'm the.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. May.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just so you understand, Dr. Mona, I second that motion because I'm always playing with these thoughts. See, I'm knowing when I second the motion, it's two more rounds for five minutes, fifty, uh, some more time, a million dollars of this. I don't, we haven't even seen your paperwork yet.
I submitted that here.
Yeah, we requesting that. We want to see all of us. And, well, we, you know, it's nothing to do with you. I'm just talking out loud because I'm looking at your demeanor, your presence, plus I'm talking to the public. I gotta talk more than you. And so I second that, um, even though I've got compassion and business in my heart for, um, the House of Esther. I got compassion and business in my heart for the families that you want to help. And so even if you didn't take money from here and put it there, that's one point five million. When you talking one point five million, and you working with thirty to forty million, if you really get your budget together, you might can do both. When you looking at what Pastor Reed was talking about, fifty thousand. When you really get your act together, you might do a hundred and fifty thousand. Because you talking thirty, forty million. But you don't want a piece million and do both out of turn because of what they name is. What your name is. What your name need. Whether it's my foundation, the land bank, or Dr. Mona, you want to do stuff in order. You want them that you don't know who their name is. Ms. Johnson, John Doe, Ms. Stevenson, all those seven hundred people you want to help, everybody. And it's enough money to go around. And you have to get the council and the administration to talk about it publicly and frankly. Not behind closed doors with applications and deadlines the way it's been done now. That's very problematic. And so I'm not going to stand for this at a point now where it started out at ninety-seven million. And so it's now somewhere between thirty and sixty million. And it's time to buckle down. I'm gonna call you up and let you speak on the shares, I don't mind. And so now it's time to buckle down. Let's get back to you. Doctor, you have something you want to add through you, Madam Chair, through my man. You want to say something?
What happened to the money?
You're welcome, come on. Thank you, Dr. Mona, for saying what happened.
I hear y'all making all this fun, and y'all, Sam, y'all doing out the park all this, but what happened? I just forgot that the city flip went for downtown Delve, where the rest of the one. And I think you had people out here. You know, I understand, you got ninety-seven million dollars being the city flip. That money was supposed to use for the city flip, downtown flip, only, all of you, all these builders are here, you think here? The money y'all had in this town, this would be like a big place.
I think we can do better.
We can do better, y'all get your hair together.
But, but, but how do you do that? Now you, now you, now you have to say how to.
How you do that?
Yeah, how you do it?
Sit at the table, we understand what you tell.
Okay, so.
She can make, she can make, she can make. Y'all play, tell it, tell it, and put it, and help the rest of the team, and it will happen for what?
Let's say if we called another special beat that we called on, and didn't, and never show up that.
What y'all gonna say? How many of you know you called a special beat?
Two.
Two to three, right?
It take two to call, and it take five to show up. When we called it last, that only four showed up. Ms. Burns, Ms. McRutada, Ms. Murphy and Michelle. Well, you saying it's high time you called another word.
It's high time, because that's what you buy, sit down and tell the guys before. All y'all know, come with you, let's get it, what the city can do. You got, you got the bills, and you got homeless people out there, sleeping in the streets, all of the city flip. Reason why, because y'all want it, y'all.
And this ain't a rocket science. You play this, that easy to get it, Joe.
It's easy, y'all, to mine.
I can make a call, you back up, they will let the clock begin.
So anyone else in the first row?
Don't you bring your ass up.
No, she and I not just got her birth kids. But, and I've had my issues regarding the House of Esther purchasing St. Agnes. Taking, uh, number one, we don't know if it's legal for us to take money to give to an organization to purchase property. That's what us basically, in my mind, giving them property for nothing. Number two, we got a council suggestion, they had plenty of time to get their, um, personal property out of the building when they were addicted, they stayed out too bad.
Request information.
What you, they have not been. Thank you, um.
And then they lock them out so they couldn't get the.
So, I'm not in favor of this system, and I'm really sorry to say that, kind of. I like, I, I fully support the House of Esther's mission, fully support it. Do I support the House of Esther? They're not really in their fundraising patterns, basically. In order to purchase the property, when they had the option, which they had one for half.
Hey.
How, if he gave them five hundred thousand dollars, how would they be able to give that property off to code so that they could have, um, voters in that right? How is it going to be made safe? There's no water running to that place. The property has been vandalized. What, we can't just give them the property? And they have to have the funds available to do that renovation necessary. I would love to see House of Esther start some fund, and grow into it. Start three or four different homes. That I think they can swing. But, so I'm gonna vote no on this resolution. I'm also gonna vote no for ARX kids. I've said that before. I believe it's welfare, it's not sustainable. We cannot continue this. And when those children need to be five years old, what happens to the parents? Have they gone out, gotten a job, learned a trade? We don't know. They can do that now because there's plenty of resources for that. Might has many programs. There's plenty of financial aid. There's not, you don't need to have a degree to burn a decent living. You can learn a skilled trade. I'm not one hundred percent behind, everybody needs to go to college. But there's lots of programs and jobs out there that are begging for people. They're begging for people. So, number one, I'm not voting for ARX kids, and I'm just going to vote for this resolution. Thank you very much, Manager. Thank you very much, Manager.
Anyone else want to buy this people a home?
Eric, Eric.
This works.
Eric.
Uh, excuse me, no yelling out. Go ahead.
Is this the first round still?
Y'all driving, we crazy, this is...
Madam Chair. Ms. Wood, come on. Um, Quincy, I hear what you're saying as far as, oh, he's there, Dr. Murphy, I hear what you're saying as far as House Esther is, is flicking, and I do also agree with the, um, RX, um, children. But, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for any, anything that deals with the ARPA money like that, until, until this administration can be transparent.
Yes.
We have not had the transparency. We're getting resolutions, but we have not been informed of the recommendations that the so-called, uh, ARPA committee made. So, I, I, I just, I believe in full transparency, and right now, I cannot vote on anything that's coming before us. Because first of all, I don't even know how did the ARPA, uh, committee make their recommendations? And their so-called recommendations went to the mayor first, then he sends us these resolutions, but the council didn't even, um, have a chance to even look at a list of what was recommended.
That one.
So, why should I, as a council member, sit here and vote for anything that has to do with ARPA funds?
Ms. Prezy.
That was recommended by this so-called twelve-member ARPA commi-, uh, committee? I can't do it, I'm sorry. So I'll be voting to abstain. And, uh, whoever can get on Facebook and talk about colleagues abstaining, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
Until it's clear. Thank you.
Very well said.
Anyone else want to speak on this motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burn.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Murphy, for what you stated, because we do know that people will get on and say, we abstain, then they'll say something totally different in mind, they never get on Facebook or social media and say anything, do it all the time without abstaining, then they put our pictures up, you too. So, I'm gonna speak to this, I, I, you know how I feel about this, you, you, you know that, and, um, and I get Dr. Mona's, uh, Dr. Mona's, you know, when we talk about that, and she has, and I'm looking at her, right, and she was saying, oh, this is my program, and I wanna keep it the way it is, and just, and let's break up and spread wealth around, and I get that. Um, I cannot vote on it because there's a law, because twelve members of our advisory committee, we don't know how the recommendations have come down, and we told our ad hoc committee that they were not, um, they were kept in the dark, that this administration has been very secretive. We had to subpoena the records and the applications, because some application, they say, if people put in, they, and some people are getting money, they didn't put in an application. So, the process is flawed, that's not on your group, it's not on us, it's just the way it is, and I will not pass or be a part of anything at this point that has not been transparent, um, it's not equitable, and we've got this, we've got some issues. And to my colleague, one of my colleague, Julie, she, she has stated consistently that she felt that it was a form of welfare for, um, the program couldn't sustain itself, that it would run out and so wouldn't be able to continue. Um, and this, we, we are able to disagree, but still mean I shall advocate, I don't agree with her, I do not agree at all, at all, because when you are a single mother, you really understand that things can be expensive. When I first adopted her, I got formula, and she had no trauma, a box of diapers, and the trauma would cost me fifty dollars then. I don't even know what the trauma costs now, and I did not receive any government assistance, nothing. So, you have incidents that may happen with a young, a young mom, or expective mom, you gotta be a mother kind of to know that, you know, your life field, your tire got bad, or you don't have daycare, you know, or, you know, you need clothes, it's time to get shoes. My mother likes to check my baby's shoes, make sure they're dry, right, let me know when she felt they needed shoes. So, it's things that parents, you know, do, and stride whites weren't expensive, now they wear tennis shoes. So, we talk about how time can change. Julie has been reviewed, she wanted for House Esther to have cupcakes, they're not gonna happen. That was just not realistic, it was not, but we can be a life coach, we cannot be a life coach on expected mothers who tell them how to live their life. We can assist them and give them the guidance and skills, and that's what these programs, House Esther and your program is doing. When we talk about House Esther, and I want to be clear, House Esther had an investor, Julie, the investor's still here in August today, who said he would pay for it, the administration would sell them the property. They have a sustainable program, they would have a way, this house will not let false or misinformation be put out here. They are still helping in the community, they don't need a two-bedroom or two or three, that's not your decision to make, unfortunately, because we help over what some homeless teen moms were in foster care, and those moms actually age out, and the baby is kept in inside of the foster system. Now, persons, people talk about nursing, I nursed all three of my children, and don't regret, it was not convenient when I did it, and my daughter's thirty-three. Wasn't the, the, the good thing, but it was a healthy thing. So, we talk about keeping these kids with their moms, if a mother is nursing consistently, you can pump, it's not the same, that baby climbs with the mother, that baby has to. And when we don't keep the mom and the baby together, then these kids, they go out and say, why don't you feel like anybody's over? Now, I have shoes if I'm working, they go, these kids don't have hair. It used to be grandparents raising, now it's strength is raising. So, if we can do something proactive by helping the program, I'm gonna help it, and Dr. Murphy, I, I wish I could, if the one or another part you bring this back up, I will support it, because it's not a decision that the ARPA commission is making, it's a decision we are making, and that's the big difference. We have the capability, ability to make a change, a huge change, in a grassroots program, and not by just raising or selling some cupcakes.
Okay.
Anyone else want to add?
The first round?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Murphy, I, I support the House of Esther's last vote, um, I don't recall exactly what it is, but I believe I abstained because at the time of the president, I mean, in the House, so I had no say. And I'll say, I'm the right to say, I'm proud, I'm pro-b Democratic, a hundred percent I support it, and I support this program, RX Kids, because that's where we have a little different philosophy, I believe, because this is a separate time, money, that this is a hand up, not a hand down. So, that's where, that's where we're gonna disagree, um, Ms. Prezy, but I guess, I gotta through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Prezy, if you have the spreadsheet that didn't House of Esther apply for, so that's where, that's where I don't wanna start to...
I'll double-check, just as I didn't think I saw it. Give me a minute, because I thought...
I didn't, I don't, because I thought I had not seen it, um, Ms. Burn's position, so I will look at that right now.
Yeah, spreadsheet, put it on the screen.
That's true.
What makes you welcome? One of your last recommendations?
Yeah, of course, that's a good point, because, through you to the speaker, um, did the disability network apply for the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? From what I'm hearing, no.
Whoa! Don't let the baby out of the water again.
That was the case, I would have, yes, because that right there is picking and choosing, instead of, instead of that, but I don't want anybody on this council looking to see if they were, if they were, uh, submitted an application.
You already got a vote.
And that's, same on me, as much as anybody else, we didn't double-check that, because we are the checks and balances about it, so to your point, you are a hundred percent
Um, I see no application under public health or housing as lying, um, for House of Esther.
Ooh!
So, I don't mind, so I think we're kinda trying to, tell you two different things, we're talking about giving money, but we're also extremely never gonna give that money to the building, and I don't know, I don't know, wow, I don't have a problem with giving money to start it up, um, my question would be, since they didn't put in an application, are the funds that we are using, or that we have allocated for discrepancy, are those funds only more to be allocated for people that, um, that submitted applications, or for projects that we are passionate about? I don't know.
You know my thing.
But, uh, because it's not on our radar to look at, to see who submitted applications, I don't necessarily, and that's probably something we need to look at, for sure, but I'm saying that it's submitted, that's very troubling. It's very troubling, if they submit an application and it's not on our...
I just...
You didn't... You probably...
I did find, that's why, I thought I had seen one hundred public health, um, there was one, now for, um, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Oh, so there was one?
There was one.
Sorry, folks, if you see that spreadsheet, it's impossible to read?
Yeah, it actually, it says the, and I looked for disability in alphabetical, but it is the disability.
So, thank you, um, Ms. Prezy, for keeping track of that, but there is no, uh, House of Esther, you looked at anything?
House of Esther's legal name is House of Esther.
We're looking for...
Oh, you don't have the floor, you can't, um, go ahead.
Um, so, because they didn't submit their information, we don't have submitted, I don't have, if they did submit, we're taking it out of the discretionary dollars that we have allocated in that category, but whether or not we wanna alter the dollar in ARPA for RX Kids, it is the purview of the body, but we don't want allocated monies to someone that didn't fly, so it won't be that. But I will support thinking, if it comes out of the spreadsheet, I do.
Anyone else want to speak on this motion?
Anyone else? Or we're saying that, um...
We're in the first round, of course, we made it to the first round, right?
Yes, in the first round. Anyone else? Already seen it, there is no one else. I'll go ahead and take my time. So, I'm glad the colleagues pointed that out. One, uh, one thing that one colleague said is that they did not give recommendations from the committee, we did. And it was on the spreadsheet, emails us at the beginning of August. However, the spreadsheet was not friendly to look at. So, let's be clear, not getting anything, not getting anything friendly, and I second the look at, it's two totally different streets, so we did receive it, but it was not in a good format. Um, next, I'm glad that Councilwoman Prezy pointed out that disability network did apply for us. Again, let's make sure that we're putting out factual information, and so, um, Dr. Mona, if you could please approach the lacquer. So, I have, um, a few questions, because, you know, it was brought to my attention. We have audience members, um, community residents, they feel that we should have sixteen million dollars towards homeownership. I said, sure, where's the trouble to come from? We're waiting on our colleagues to, um, take a look at the budget that Ms. Prezy and I, um, worked on, and this body passed, this, uh, ARPA allocation, this body already passed that, and so, we're looking...
Question, Ms. Prezy.
What is your request?
You mean the majority of this body, right? Not everybody, wasn't unanimous, you mean the majority of this body, correct?
This body passed it, okay? And so, the fact that this body, um, passed it, that's what you're preaching, and so we told our colleagues, please, go through this, look and see where we can capture that sixteen million, since a lot of the colleagues stated that we won't vote for it because we need more money in home repair. We said, do the work, bring it back, we can vote on it. The work has yet to be done. So, thank you for coming to the lacquer, Dr. Mona, and so my question is this, how much money are you looking to raise for this monumental program?
The total budget to do this for five years of moms and babies, uh, so starting with babies born in twenty twenty-four is fifty-five million dollars, eleven million dollars a year to do this. Nine million dollars a year is for the direct cash allowances, money is going to go to every pregnant mom and every baby, to every ward, just is putting money directly to the hands up, every money, every, every pregnant mom and every baby. Um, another one million dollars is needed for operations a year, another one million dollars is needed, um, for evaluation, so it's eleven million dollars a year. The nine million dollars in cash allowances will be spent in the local economy, this is going to create a massive boost to our economy, think of it as a joint, small businesses and everything else. We need fifty-five million, we have raised over forty million dollars, we have fifteen million dollars, yeah.
Okay, thank you for all of that. So, my next question is this, um, that one million dollars that you, will you, did you apply for the fund?
We applied.
Okay, so now it's clear that they applied for the fund, okay, you did a, a ARPA application. Okay, all right, and so you're asking this body, not for the five million that you applied for, but for one million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, what is the reason that you're asking this body for one million dollars? Is it a contingency? In, in terms of other donors, so, go ahead.
So, there's three reasons why ARPA dollars are worth it. If ARPA dollars is in the future of our funds, it protects benefits, this is not considered income, so people, it's work items, it's a gift, because of the public health declaration. So, when ARPA dollars are in this pool of money, it protects people's benefits, that's the number one reason, the ARPA dollars. Number two, we have national donors who have not committed to RX Kids because the city has not committed. They are not buying into this program until the city, the city of Flint is supporting their own, um, security. So that is the second reason, that the city of Flint needs to come alongside all the massive bill of bills in the state to support moms and childrens. Um, so, those are the two biggest reasons that we want to save the ARPA.
Okay, thank you. So, hearing that, it's a contingency, we are leveraging this, well, I think this is almost the best lever that we had so far, we're about to turn one million dollars into fifty mil, fifty-five million dollars to go into the pockets and mothers that reside in this city.
Every mom and baby.
No time, bud.
Thank you. So now, we will go on to our second round.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, um, I'm gonna say something real quick, and I'm gonna call somebody else, but my point is this, any money we spend, it's gonna be the decision of the council, and it's gonna take, for me, it's like the first one, three dollars, and it's gonna take some discretion and some riposte and gapulation, that'll be best. I'm not gonna keep spending here and spending there, and then we ain't even getting to the people, what I think is my concern, that's the home improvements and business as best. Generation of wealth and welfare, and I keep hearing you, Ms. Lewis, talk about what the council of majority packs. This majority council, the vote, it repeats... This majority council adopted repeatedly wrong on just these simple application of the rules. But my point in bringing up what you're saying, I've been doing this for ten years, and when you do a physical budget with multi-million dollars, I guarantee you not challenge anyone in the public to prove me wrong. You make amendments. You make an amendment to the budget month after month, year after year. So don't keep saying what this council has approved initially. You can amend that budget. If we at that point up amended, we need to have a working session, amend the budget, see what we gonna do, and then stop spending money. There's enough money to do both facts. If we wanted to, he was gonna have to, I put that out, as the weekend had run. The problem with the house after, Mr. Murphy, must be plumbing for one. As it relates to that building. That they had become like that property where Saints and God used to be on Pearson Road. So halftime discussion, do you matter to, I said to Mr. Woodson and any other public member, this ain't a rocket science. Would you come and say what you think, you've been here long enough, you gotta be. And when you call each, Ms. Lewis, you want to show up.
I'll go with you. Don't take this personally. This is all about money, kids, Flint. Not long ago, ACLU sued Conflent Community Schools to help out community schools. NCE, you know, chairman, Lexi. GHS, registry got four point two million dollars from the school district for NCE. That money was supposed to make sure that our Flint kids paid everything, assessing, supposedly done. Out of four hundred kids, only ten was from Flint. The majority of the money, three point two million, that went to GHS, only fifty thousand was used for the therapist. Only two kids, they would be seen once a week. The rest of the money went to salaries. Registry, same thing. I have issues, I have issues with it. Nothing against Dr. Mona personally. But when I seen her and Dr. Edwards on the stamp of the state, my stomach dropped. How much money goes to MSU? Out of that fifty-five million? I'm tired of our kids being misused. How many of the kids in the juvenile home, to state the registry? How many kids in the juvenile home was affected by water and still centers and sent to prison? They tell us that. Zero to twelve, they don't have any doubt. That's what I heard, because I've been asking for it. Stop throwing money just anywhere, anywhere. Revive health center, children's, almost supposed to have been adopted, she get ninety-seven thousand dollars delivered to Florida. Only open two times a week. Virtual on Monday, only a couple hours on Wednesday, and then you got invoices getting plenty. When House of Esther been down here every day trying to get money to help, and they keeping the kids there. The young women in the place.
Mr. Woodson, can I ask if you willing to show up in a working session to discuss all this money?
Yeah.
I thought.
Anyone else want to speak in the second round?
No, I'm sure.
Ms. Worthing?
I am unsure why we are calling random people up to do this. I very like to hear from actual people that know the statistics and has nothing. This program has nothing to do with what was just mentioned. Um, I want to address the love for opponents and, um, the, I guess, pregnant women and women with their babies who could find jobs. That was insulting. Um, you obviously have not had children, because having child is things that you are, um, you're out of work, you can't go to work after having a child. Um, so we have parents that may even be well off, but there is no, uh, national program here, as in other countries, uh, like Germany, Canada, uh, that support mothers and fathers with one year off after having a child, um, so that they can spend time with their newborn babies. For, for those who are pro-life, to say that this isn't needed are not truly pro-life. Because mothers need to be with their children, their babies, um, they need to, um, not have to worry about work. And if you're a single mother, uh, and you don't have support, then you're supposed to go back to work immediately, apparently, after having a child. Um, so, I, I don't know, unless you've had a child, unless you've been pregnant, unless you've been through this, um, the opinion to me is not valid. Um, even nine months of being pregnant, that's a lot. I could barely work in my last, uh, months of my pregnancies, uh, because it's tiring. Uh, many people have issues during their pregnancy where they're, um, constantly sick and they have to be on bedrest. And I don't, I don't think any of them needed someone to find them a job while they, uh, were in the hospital trying to rest so that they could have their child. Uh, and if I sound upset about it, it's because I am. I just cannot believe some of the comments I've heard. Um, also, the House of Esther has nothing to do with this. This was money that was applied for. Uh, Dr. Mona is in charge of this. She is a trustworthy, um, person to be in charge of this. So I don't wanna just support homeowners and home repairs. This is helping mothers and children the least of these. And, um, I will always, this is very big on my heart, I teach children, um, they don't always have, and they always need a leg up. And, and again, even if you have the money, when you take time off for your child, you get, there's no guaranteed income, none. So, um, I had to save up money to take three months off, which is the maximum allowable amount to guarantee your job with FMLA. And so, I was privileged enough to be able to save that money beforehand. But with inflation, I don't know if I could do that at this moment if that ever happened to me again. And five hundred dollars a month? That's nothing, it's a drop in the bucket, uh, for everything a child needs. And so, pregnant mothers, um, and mothers don't need guys, they need help so that they can provide for their children and be healthy. I, I brought up before that, um, it is African-American mothers that are, uh, more likely to die, uh, during childbirth and after, uh, because of lack of healthcare and resources. So, in this community, we especially need mothers and children to have more resources. This is something near and dear to my heart, I will of course vote yes, I would hope that we have five to vote yes, if not, I'd be very disappointed. Um, but I, I think we veered off the conversation quite a bit recently. Let's just remember what this resolution is about, and let's support Flint's mothers and children. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in the second round?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Um, the category for the disability network, I'm not sure.
Need the mic.
Was trying to tear out category that we funded for, um, the disability network. I'm not sure it came out of a category that we actually funded the disability network, that's what I was trying to get, um, to clarify. Did we pull from the application that they actually applied, so we got different categories of ARPA funding? And I'm not sure that the funding that we have bought, if we actually funded disability network, they actually applied for. So, just to clear that up, um, I would like to go refer on through you to the man to make sure that the category that they were funded for, they actually applied for, that they get funded through a category that they did not apply for. That's what I need to get clarified some more. Also, through, um, the chair, to Dr. Mona, uh, my question to you is, so mothers who have babies that was born December, November, will those mothers be able to apply, um, for this program?
The program starts in twenty twenty-four January. The program starts in January twenty twenty-four for pregnant moms and babies born in January twenty twenty-four.
So for all the mothers who have babies that was born, um, that's under twelve months, they won't be eligible for this program?
There has to be a start date.
That's, that's, that's another problem for me. Because you got a lot of mothers, to my colleagues, that, you know, I hear you talk about mothers. You got mothers that just had a baby in December, November, they won't be eligible for this program. So, what, what we, what we're saying is, you gotta be pregnant after January. And you got to have your baby after January, so from January, um, December for twelve months, you got to have a baby, so it's only a limited.
No, it's, the program's gonna happen for five years. So if we're all babies born, if we get enough money in the next five years. But it starts, I wish I could start now, if we had more money, we could start sooner. But it starts in twenty twenty-four for pregnant moms, people who are pregnant twenty twenty-four, or babies born in twenty twenty-four. But it will continue up until, I think, babies born in twenty twenty-eight, if we raise the number. But the goal is to give us for five years of pregnant moms and pregnant babies, and we have a sustainability plan. The money we got from the state is from Tana.
So you gotta go, you basically gotta go have some kids.
Don't we want to?
You gotta go have some kids, so for the kid that's already here that you're talking about, that's in school or just had a baby, they won't be eligible for the funding, so we want to help them. That's the problem.
I wish we could start sooner, I wish we didn't come up with that.
I mean, because right now, right now, people gotta go have a baby in order to.
Just free thing, don't get a whole team.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion in second round? Any other discussion in second round, so you know who's been, um, follow please.
She called for roll call. Yeah, it's time for roll call.
So there is a motion for the House of Esther five hundred thousand dollars of the recommended amount. Our kids, one million. Roll call.
Ms. Chair, could you repeat that stat again?
Sure, sure. So the motion for a floor to give the House of Esther five hundred thousand dollars of our kids, one million ounces. Roll call, Matt.
Ms. President?
I abstain because we have heard women report they need more the ARPA grant, media, the selection process, the VolCham member more.
Ms. Chair?
No.
Ms. Driver?
No.
Ms. Worley?
No.
Ms. Mayes?
Um, I abstain because we could do it all, we could do one million and the five hundred thousand if we so choose to do it. So until we go over the whole thing, I abstain in this sense.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Kreisler?
No.
Ms. Chair?
I abstain for reasons stated before.
Please, one yes, five no. Listen, the vote is one yes, five no, and three yes. Yes, I'm telling you, all right? All right, with that motion paid. So going back to the original motion, um, we are currently on our first round, and this is for the Commission of Representatives for American kids. So so far, we have, um, the first board, the ninth board, and the third board have spoken in the first round. Anyone else in the first round? All right, seeing there's no one else in the first round, I'll just refuse to take my time. This is, this is a no-brainer. Um, and it's a no-brainer because when, um, initially, I was wondering if you have the excess millions, such as the, I said the fifty-four million, why do you need our one million? Because I was looking for places, actually looking for places to give the resident that extra money for home repair. However, when I was told that it was a contingency and outside investors were looking at it saying, if Flint is not willing to invest in Flint, why should we invest in Flint? It makes nothing but sense. So then I said, true. So now we're looking at, this is one, when they just want to say the math ain't mathing, this math is over mathing. Like I mentioned before, you're telling me that I'm gonna give you one million dollars, and in exchange, you're gonna give me fifty-five million dollars. You're gonna flood this city. These mothers don't live in Flint Township, okay? They don't live in Atlanta, they don't live in Grand Lake. These Flint mothers live in Flint, and they have Flint babies that do Flint stuff. So seeing that, that one million dollars, we can magically turn that into fifty-five million dollars, I'll be remiss not to invest in this investment. This is the ultimate leverage, but I don't think that we have leverage funds, um, to this caliber since we allocated any amount of ARPA dollars. This is good for Flint. This is good for Flint mothers, I didn't know anything about the, uh, the situation of mothers till I became one. And yes, you can't work, the doctors tell you to sit your tail down for the first, uh, few weeks, not for the first month. So if they're telling you to sit down, you can't do anything, you can't work. This is definitely a hand up for the mothers. This is definitely a hand up for the city in terms of paying bills. This might, this money might help out with paying a water bill, some taxes. This money is going to restaurants, grocery stores, the new Flint food market as soon as it opens its doors, this is where this money can go. So the fact that we're, that this is even a discussion, is not. I applaud Dr. Mona for even bringing this to the city of Flint, because Flint renowned for pioneering breakthrough, who was the first in community education, you all know that you were the first in automotive industry, and I'm proud to be a part of the voting bodies, just wanna vote for this to be the first in the United States pioneer right here with the city of Flint, but there's no downside to this. There's no downside to giving somebody one million dollars and they turn it into fifty-five million. So, seeing that there's no one else in the first round, second round?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Maye?
Ms. Chair, be careful what you say, it's always a pro or a con. You could put five hundred dollars in the hands of a mom that's spending on alcohol. You don't, I never say there's ever a downside, I don't know about that. I don't know about that with many of them. That's what I'm gonna say through you, Ms., uh, Dr. Mona, come and let's talk a little bit. I want, we've got the right to know the details. You not gonna sell me, tell me there's no downside. We ain't in Flint through the program, because we can't do it in both five minutes, and y'all refusing to meet on an off day.
What's that information?
That's your personal one.
Did you receive the package from Dr. Mona?
I've received it all. I've been receiving packages for ten years, and I do check. You out of order, you using the new technology.
I'm not done. Did you receive the package from Dr. Mona, the T-shirt?
I can ensure it. I can ensure it. You give out warnings when we do this, and separate by name, history. Word of it. So don't be a hypocrite. Let us do request information to quit warning us and trying to throw us out, and you do just defend we do.
Um, Madam Clerk, please start the time.
I'm gonna demonstrate, because you've been out of hand for weeks and months. Now let me try to get back to where I was at, uh, Dr. Mona. I was getting at the monitoring of the money, once this this up. Did all those guys answer the question?
Yes.
How do you monitor it?
We're working with an international organization called GiveDirectly. This is all they do, they give people money.
Or somebody gonna monitor that when we give it out?
Yes, they have fraud.
Okay, let me move past, because really where I'm headed is making a motion to postpone it till we can get some more information and talk, and until we can touch it the rest of this night. So I ain't quite there yet, but I listened to the speech of a person who been beaten with the unlawful recommendation and advisory committee. She that committee was appointed by Mr. Vili, the charter says she's the appointed by the council, an advisory recommendation committee, and some votes that's new up here that went bug wild. And so, I'm in agreement that we can bet and allocate to any category we want. But the key word is bet and then allocate. It ain't taking recommendations from folks who we ain't even know who they're betting. So that's why the problem is coming in for me. And at this point, if I attempt to count votes, which I can, but this is strange committee, and a strange group, I think it's gonna be responsible to postpone it to committee, and then try to get detailed information. Let me ask you this question. What if we gave you the one million, and y'all didn't raise the fifty-five million? So is the fifty-five million guaranteed?
We raised forty-one million.
You raised forty-one million?
Forty-one, forty-one.
She talking about fifty-five. I said, what if you bet? Do y'all get a million back? If like, she keeps saying a million raises fifty-five, you telling me y'all already raised forty-one? What is she talking about? You already raised forty-one, but I'm betting. She throwing, y'all talking, I understand, one million leverage fifty-five, that ain't true. You already got forty-one. And you got whole forty-one, you already in the City of Flint.
All the forty-one dollars, one million dollars is all for this program for school and city.
Right, the City of Flint is a bigger program than the City of Flint.
Only for.
Okay, so if we didn't give a million, we already got forty-one million.
But the donors who won't give until the city gives, and when they borrow the money, then helps.
Let me say this, that's totally different what I heard my colleague just said. And so that's why I say we have to get an understanding. We can't listen to her, we have to listen to you, we have to ask the right questions. You know, I'm thinking, y'all had zero in one million, don't get your fifty-five, you already got forty-one million. So, you know, here's a reason that I don't press the gas too fast. I'm gonna make a motion to table this back to Finance Committee, unless somebody wanna give us more time to talk, 'cause this clock is killing me with twenty-one seconds. So my motion is to table it to our back to Finance Committee, I wanna incentivize myself.
Alright, there. There is a motion to table Resolution two, three, zero, two, eight, one, point, one, to find a, any support? Support by Mr. Murphy. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayes?
Well, I just heard from Dr. Mona. I appreciate.
Is there any discussion for today?
It might not be.
That's enough music.
Oh, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. What's the rule? Is if you got three men, anybody, we ain't talking, you're turning down.
It's three men.
You ready, young man? Let me give it, I only tell them they didn't deliver it outside, got some beefy with it. And that's what they believe.
They got the clock still going here.
Every step. Oh, is they proceed? Okay. I'm glad, thank you. You are a good man.
Watch the, watch the law.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm not gonna warn you, I like the oath. Uh, Dr. Mona, I was saying, thank you for the information. And, uh, we'll see what happens with this motion to table it back to Finance. We'll see what happens. Uh, from the information that you've given me, as I sort through this, I'm clearly understanding some things. I understand the fifteen hundred, I understand the five hundred a month for twelve months. I understand we don't have precedent when an investment, I'm not opposed to it. But what I do wanna do, I wanna try to get this whole budget in order. Where this y'all program, the House has to own improvements. I wanna take a P at this juncture on the whole budget. And the only way we gonna do that is to get cooperation from the mayor's administration and the council. And they gonna vote after show up at a meeting that I like to call a working session. So you'll see me, uh, once this motion pass or fail, once I get the opportunity, you'll see me put a motion on the floor, whether it's for next week, two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, to try to get this thing moved. And so, don't go anytime, but be patient, just 'cause we might through trials and tribulations during the wild crisis. And we go through trials and tribulations in our everyday life. So hang in there, and we'll see what happens. But now, you know, I ain't as smart as people give me credit for. Maybe it'll pass tonight, but I'm with you to count votes, and, uh, if you're surprised, we'll see what happens. Thank you so much. I'll be voting, postpone back to Finance.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
Madam Chair, Dr. Mona, um, I am gonna vote to send it back to Finance, but I do wanna let you know, because when we abstain, my reasoning for abstaining is very clear. My colleague, uh, Ms. Lewis, has put on Facebook that we keep abstaining with another colleague. And I don't even know if you know, are aware of one of your workers who attacked me on social media with her. And I support this program. I support this program. My extension, I'm consistent, my colleagues know it, and I take, taking care of babies very seriously. And then when Talis, when you first came up to the old Red the Domes, I let you know that I support this. But we have to be careful that I have to remain impartial, that dealing with some of these people say that they do not make attacks on social media. They do, they do. My abstaining is not something any of my colleagues should be getting into, because it jeopardizes your program. It jeopard, you got a worker on Facebook, well, she wants to recall me, that's friends with Ms. Lewis. And I still have to set all that aside, your program is a great program. And I stand on that, I stand on that. But all, and I was gonna send you, I'm, I'm gonna send you the email so you can see. Because if your item is coming before us, I don't want your employee to become, um.
A liability.
To be.
Liability.
You say their words have become toxic. And so, when we, when you do that, for me, it is really about the, the program and the work that's being done. I'm not here for popularity, my choices are mine, I stand on, and I stand before the sixth floor. But you have, they talked about me abstaining. And if she went back and forth on social media with your employee, that's, you mind me, I would, that was a terrible thing to do, because if I was spiteful, vindictive, did not care about the community, and how they attacked me, I would've gone and dumped your program. And see, that's what we have to be careful, because they'll come up here and give pretty speeches, and talk about what they don't do, and it's just not true. I support your program, I don't want it to die. Um, and I wish we had had a fourth case, that was because the, the twelve member, um, advisory. I stand, all of my decisions are based on charter, our, our council rules, and common sense. But I support this project, I don't want it to die. And that's why I am going to, uh, vote to send it back. And I'll continue to support it, because moms need support, and I stand for the reason. But be careful with your work, she's be careful, because she's getting information from some toxic people, and it's not fair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else who wants to speak in the first round?
Yes, Madam Chair.
What do you want to say?
Um, and Dr. Mona, I want you to know, I do support this, um, program, however. Like I stated before, I want transparency. And I agree with Councilman Mayes, I think we need to have a meeting, we need to sit down, and we need to sort through this ARCA fund, and, and these resolutions coming to us. Without, I mean, we don't know. We don't know. We've given, we've, you know, given out, um, voting for resolutions, and some of this stuff, some of the resolutions, they have not even applied for, for money, and that's not fair. I want full transparency. So, don't worry, I'm gonna vote to send it back to committee, we're gonna work through this, and then maybe I'll be able to vote for our fund. But until then, I'm gonna have to abstain. And my colleagues, they can get on Facebook, they can talk about my extensions, so be it. But I gotta do what I think is right. So, uh, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Madam Chair.
So, um, Dr. Mona, I will not be voting to table this simply because I want it to go through to council. Uh, hopefully, we do have the votes and the support to get it to go through to council. Um, and so, uh, I'm in full support of this program, I completely understand. I understand that with the ARCA money being a part of it, it saves the benefits of the mother. And that is a huge selling point for me of why we need to put the ARCA money there to protect benefits of mothers or give this money so that they will not be later taken away. And so, um, I'm in full support of that, and everything else was I saying. And I, and I know that my colleague, and I can take it a point, as a mother, she was really passionate about it. I do not give rewards to a child, but I still fully understand the plight of mothers and single mothers. I've watched, um, people in my family, and just people around the community. And I understand, um, like my colleague in the eighth said, this will be a hand up and not a hand out. This is very important that we get this done. I also understand that others are watching, it's other people who are making a decision as to whether or not to give you the rest of this money, so that this vibrant program can help them mothers. And so, we do need to show that your city is in support of this, so that you can't get to the fifty-five million, so that the mothers can't get the vibrant support.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Mona, you talked about, um, on committee, um, funders. How much funding is, um, waiting for, uh?
It's unclear, but there are national funders who are waiting to, for the city to commit before they commit their dollars, and it is the tune of millions.
I mean, usually, when somebody gonna give you some money, they send you a letter, at least tell you, I got fifty thousand or two million, um, waiting contingency on the City of Flint. So I'm not, that, that don't sound right, that you gonna go, how much money? I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, just be clear, because we talking money. So if somebody are committing themselves to give you some funding, how you just generalize, okay, we gonna give you some money, but you don't know how much money they giving? Like, okay, did my foundation say we gonna give you two million dollars? And they sent you a letter and said, we'll give you two million dollars in contingency on, um, the City of Flint, for instance. They gave, um, ten million to Bursary Billhouse, contingency on the City of Flint giving one point five million dollars. So you mean to tell me that these people who are out there and, um, never never laying, is gonna give you some money, contingency on, if we give you a billion dollars, and you don't know how much money?
Yes, they're waiting to see Flint commit until.
Do you have a letter?
No, it hasn't been committed yet, and waiting for you to act first. A lot of our grants were contingent, the Grant Foundation gave us fifteen million dollars, but only if we were able to raise another fifteen million. We did, we got the extra fifteen million, so that helped off those dollars. So this is also like a map, they are waiting for the city to be part of the city's programs until they commit.
Did they send you a letter telling you this?
No, it hasn't been finalized, it's not the finalized. I don't know the grant.
How do you know, how do you know that they committed to give you some funding if they don't give you nothing right?
They haven't submitted, they're waiting on the city to submit.
That's a little odd. Alright, thank you.
Let me understand. Anyone else who wants to speak on this motion? Alright, seeing that, um, there's no one to speak, I'll be allowed to speak, a-again. The council, you know, the heartstrings, and we can allocate this money. And the fact that this one million dollar is bringing in fifty-five million dollars. I heard my colleague mention, well, we already got forty-one committed. The fact that it's a one million is being turned into fifty-five million. And maybe that means, uh, they'll, they'll save big billions, that's a favor.
I'm not here.
Absolutely, and please, on, we are asking for the audience to have your point, that's, um, Laura, please. So, as we say, this is an opportunity for us to take a little return to like, put in the hands of, um, swamans in this community, that's immediate, that's the handle. Totally for it, I'll see who even took it against it. Um, I heard my colleague went, well, they need a little by house call. Well, you know the benefit of it? The benefit of being that low, those stewardesses probably hear problems. But being a mother, and knowing how much diapers cost, know how much. What is your request?
Do you realize I don't want you to get out of hand in this world, but I was really trying to ask per se. Uh, do you understand that?
So that isn't a proper request for information, and that will warrant a warning.
I do.
There, there you go. The chair did not give them a warning. The chair is making a statement. The chair is saying that when you abuse or prick this motion, like Mr. Mayes did. The chair is saying that when you abuse or privilege motions like Mr. Mays made, that would be a warning. So, as I, so as I proceed--
Point of order.
What is your point?
Madam Chair, according to the rules, then you should receive a warning when he was talking. And Ms. Worthing should have received a warning.
Sure, should have.
Turn your mic on. We can hear you.
As I said, we cannot use the floor. What is your point?
If you proceed, I won't appeal your ruling and request information. You did a request for information when I was talking. And so, you need to quit doing that because it's derogatory and it's wrong and problematic. You did this request for information to me and quit doing it. Quit doing that. So, I will take that. Maybe that is not the right-- Stop all of that type of stuff. Continue to move on. Don't let them be. Don't say it because if you do, I'm gonna feel it. So, this is George, I'm telling you, quit doing that. Do it to yourself. Do it in this word. And quit doing it to my reputation.
My time is being wasted by people bombarding me when I'm speaking. And I was thinking, you cannot abuse points of information, you know, the point of order and requesting information like we just did. So--
I won't appeal your ruling of--
There is, there's, the chair did not rule. There's nothing to rule, Mr. Mays. There's nothing to--
Point of order.
What is your, what is your point?
You keep ruling that it was improper and it's taking the floor. And that's a decision you made and you articulated. I can appeal any decision that a chair--
Don't, don't appeal, man.
We got to appeal any decision that a chair can't refuse.
Mr. Mays, I'm utilizing my point of order denied. And again, I'm utilizing my freedom of--
You can appeal the, look up the chair.
Anyone second to appeal a ruling of the chair's attorney?
No.
You deny?
No, no.
Listen to the God, and say the prayer.
Point denied. So, as we move forward. So, this is so obvious. When I get the court, I'm interrupted consistently. This is so obvious. So, as I proceed, I, I forgot my thoughts. Does anyone see me? So, we are talking about sending this back--
Why are you looking at me?
It looked like the votes, um, are not here. And it looked like the determination to find there and move the whole house. But I don't want to send this back to finance at all. I want to pass this on to council so we can stop kicking the can down the road. Kick the can-- The fact that mothers are depending on this and this-- And it was up to January. Order in the chambers.
Give it to Warren.
And-- So, I hope you appear and, and we see what I share with half of us very apparent. And so, mothers are depending on this money. Mothers are looking forward to the system. And I don't want to be an impediment to them getting, getting this, getting the ball rolling and getting their, um, projected amount budgeted and allocated for. I'm for it because I'm for Plin. So, thank you, Dr. Mona.
He's for Plin.
All right. So, with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna vote. And the motion on the floor is to table Resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one to finance. Roll call, Madam Chair.
No.
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Ms. Mays?
Worthing.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is six yes, three no.
Resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one has been sent back to the finance committee.
Yes.
Uh, next, we have Resolution two-three-zero-three-two-eight.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
The Madam Chair, Resolution two-three-zero-three-two-eight is a resolution presented by Louis for trial by law, eight hundred and thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four eight period of, uh--
Six months.
Ninety days. And I move that to council to vote.
All right. So, is there support?
Madam Chair, I support that.
So, for Ms. Murphy Carter, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. Mays?
Madam Chair, it was easy, in my opinion, for you, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Priestley, I thank Mr. Piper, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Piper, Ms. Worthing, to suspend me for thirty days from my advocacy seat. I thank the upper deck for these. Now, this is a resolution for ninety days because I'm thinking the taking of money and trinkets and bribes is worse than me using a cuss word in the council room. I looked at the news today. It's a guy, I don't know if you're up in the spirit, but his name was Ben Dares or something. They tried to throw a bar, but I mean-- Perseid's been to South. And I'm like, I've been on the council for, for over ten years. If I knew that you just talked to Ashton Capital and get line more-- I'm after really, I ain't gonna lie to you.
She was a freak.
I would've went for two thousand twenty-four Cadillac. And they were promptly requesting to cover me black. And by that matter, I'm ready for this. We go in the chart that it tells us we can't do that. See, I don't worry about what the FBI, the law enforcement say. We have a duty to enforce the charter, Pastor Brilbert. But when you spoke of, of the speeches, Pastor Brilbert, you spoke about the unbuttherson.
Yes.
The unbuttherson in the ethics committee can only make recommendations to us. They didn't recommend the suspension. They didn't recommend the removal, but the vote stopped here. But Mr. Mayor, whether it's council members, the charter gives us the right to not just suspend people, but to remove people. I told them over and over, but they don't listen to me. I told them, you have to put rules in place, but they don't make the buck while. They passed a motion with ease to remove an elected council person from the first ward for thirty days. So, this resolution started at six months and guess what this priestess said? And I don't wanna put words in your mouth, this priestess, correct me if I'm wrong. You said, I'm glad that you teaching me, Councilman Mays, that we can remove votes for six months. Like, if you wanted to move me for six months, well, I took from it. I could be wrong. But you said it, didn't you? Now, y'all teaching me, I'm just talking to council meetings, Chester Sellers, Woody Appleby, McNamara, Sarvis, and I ain't never seen nobody good but y'all. Because you're doing it under the direction of Attorney Kim. Attorney Kim is a big problem for y'all. Who told you if you can deliberate outside of council meeting, you can go look at a video and heard your brother was here and-- Janelle, if anybody would listen to me, Mr. Chair was like a newbie. It was just broke. People got up and left their seats and waited back and talked to Attorney Kim and came back in a group. I had to judge and leave the lack of the form. In any sense, there, lack of the form didn't count. But it didn't count that night. Y'all have been rolled and voted repeatedly contrary to the rules. Discriminatory. I don't know if it was racist, but it showed in their basis.
That's right.
But some of it depends on racist stuff. That's the ass I know people that ask me, do you regret calling folks anti-CB people? No, because when you look at the area of the dictionary, it refers to Clarence Thomas. And the deposition is black folks, you don't care so much about blacks, but they're trying to do things to satisfy blacks.
And that's supposed to be on my--
You gotta look at it. So, I'm a broke, suspect, young for ninety days. If it don't pass, I'm coming back with verdict. But if it don't happen, I don't see a different feeling.
All right. Anyone else on the first round?
As it speaks to the charter, which we have talked, we had open discussions, to be transparent. There was, there is a problem. We look at the monies that were given. They were not disclosed. So, it was not disclosed that, um, you, uh, Dale Lewis and Quincy Murphy received funds from Ashton Capital. Section-- Section one, uh, there's, uh, one that's six oh two, which is our ethics. It speaks to it. And then it speaks to a C. It says a, which-- It states, a if received from a public service relative or immediate family member provided by a relative or immediate family is not acting on a third party's intermediary or an agent in an attempt to circumvent. But what we did not discuss, our charter, I don't know if we have to go back to correct that using a nonprofit, because it was not disclosed that, um, Councilwoman Lewis, nonprofit service part, which was originated in August of two thousand twenty-one, that, uh, that was her nonprofit. That was not, you did not share that with us. You never disclosed that. And so, also, we look at, uh, section of the Flint City Charter nine A, uh, to solicit or accept a loan payment from an individual who was providing service to, providing service to, or receiving tax payments, credits, or exemptions, exemptions from the city of Plin. Ashton Capital did ask the city of Plin for a seventy-two million dollar tax exemption or payment. And it wasn't disclosed. So, it looks to, we're not ready to clean hands. So, that part is a problem. Because when we come up here and, you know, we, we did get a legal opinion afterwards, but we didn't get it beforehand. I'm not in agreement with the legal opinion because it seems to, um, able to circumvent the city charter. And it sets a very dangerous precedent, as we discussed last week, that any of us, if we open up our own or their own nonprofits, we can circumvent the Flint City Charter and do business with everybody on the agenda. You know, we could do a complete toy through Weinstein Electric, whoever else is on there. Because it's setting a precedence that if we go through a nonprofit, don't disclose it. That, and it also say, doesn't have to be disclosed, that there is no punishment. And so, guess what happens? It opens up the doors that companies will be buying your votes. Or our votes. So, it's very clear. And it's almost unapologetic. Because when Councilman Piper asked, we were already, um, Kansas County don, he said, I would vote yes if both of you don't vote. And you double down and still vote. You still bust the yogurt, mmm-hmm. Okay, well, you took, Council Murphy took another twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that he dropped off at the councilman office for forty-five families. You gotta disclose that. You're doing business with Ashton Capital and they're funding you for your special project. And you're funding them, it looks like, their special project in a ton of seventy-two million. So, it's not really-- If this opinion was asked beforehand, I would hope they would've done it. The legal opinion was given after. But you, you've taken it. So, you're not operating with clean hands. I don't think it was an apology, even my colleagues, I apologize, or to my colleagues for not letting you know. I found out in the church because they thought I owned the money. Nope. Don't own the money, because I know how that gets. You don't take the money. Spy New Detroit went to prison. And they called it bribes. Clarence Thomas, as he's jetting around everywhere, went back to redo his financial statement because he's hanging around as a billionaire friend. Nice vacations, donations. You can't do that. Supreme Court justice. You're making decisions with the city and you don't have clean hands. And then you did not refrain from voting. And if I was gonna break anything from not voting because of my stance on ARCA, I would not have let that fail. I would've stepped outside of my bounds to support Ashton Capital so it didn't fail. And you didn't know that. Y'all have these private conversations. Y'all need to stop. You're not operating with clean hands.
Anyone else?
That's right, Maia.
Madam Chair. Um, like the previous one, I would be supporting this one as well, um, as Ms. Ms. Burns stated that, um, I offered the opportunity to support it so that we wouldn't have to take it both. And it's, to me, there are no, you are not operating with clean hands because you're using your nonprofit, and I'm gonna use air quotes, nonprofit, to prop up your council seat. Everything you put out, you use the nonprofit logo. So, how is that not a conflict? And, and now, Ashton Capital is supporting your nonprofit, which is supporting your council activities? That's a conflicting, no, nowhere right. And then I see that your nonprofit put out the, the news, the M, or the Michigan now hit piece about the, um, press conference. So, how is it that the nonprofit needs to get into a political situation on, on a hit piece on another council person? How is that within the boundaries of the nonprofit? That's why those lines are so blurred. It's not even--
What's like for information? What did you try to refer to?
Those line, or those lines between you and your nonprofit are non-existent. And you are using that nonprofit to shell donations. To hide from the community. Plain and simple. You know, it's, it's funny. Back in twenty nineteen, uh, bear with me for one second. I got three minutes. Let me find it because there's so many of them. I don't, I apologize. You correct yourself. In twenty eighteen, you tweeted, you retweeted a quote from Kamala Harris that said, she's saying that yesterday I announced I would no longer accept contribution from corporate PACs. And I don't have to accept a system that drowns out the voices of American people, nothing better. And your comment to Kamala Harris was big business shouldn't produce political buckets. Isn't that a contradiction of what you just did? You literally took a political donation from big business. Right before we go, how is that not just, I don't mean it's a finance? Thank you.
That's right, that's right, that's right. That's right, that's right. You got to beg Dennis.
Um, neither Ms. Lewis nor Mr. Murphy directly received funds for their campaign from Ashton Capital, but Mr. Mays did, so I'm okay with that. They have resolution against them on Mr. Mays.
He disclosed his.
But they did not, it wasn't campaign to.
He disclosed his.
So they did not have to do that.
Excuse me, the audi- the audience should not be speaking to council. The audience should not be yelling out.
They shouldn't yell at us either.
Pardon?
They shouldn't yell at us either.
So what needs to happen is, we need to have order in the audience.
And then from the council.
And Ms. Mohammed, please.
She shouldn't be highlighting people.
Ms. Mohammed, please.
Ms. Lewis, stop. Resign, Ms. Lewis, you should resign. You were incompetent. You were incompetent.
You're incompetent. Resign.
Who came out, who came out, hold out, residents, name.
Free run.
You're out.
You're out.
That's wrong. That's wrong.
She's okay.
You just took whatever, whatever you need to do, and it's wrong. Get me out of here. But I'm here, don't worry. As a fact, I'm gonna make a motion that we send you down from chair next meeting at the next meeting. Now, that's what I say.
I made a motion. So the, so the, the, I can make sure that I have everything correct. So, Ms. Mays, we're standing at ease, please hold.
Request reformation. I, Madam Chair, what's the standing at ease? What are you referring to?
Taking, according to Robert Rule, that's when you take a pause. You don't have a recess, but a pause to get taken over.
Yeah, you said, but Councilman Mays, is that referring to him? I'm unclear what you're saying, what you're saying. Madam Chair, all you need to do is ask for a second.
I understand what all I need to do, so listen. My thing is, I'm getting things together. I wanna make sure that we are in order so we can proceed. According to Robert Rule, order, you use the term stand at ease, and that just puts a brief hold. It's not recess, but it's a brief hold. So the chair, what is your question?
Madam Chair, I made a motion. The next thing for you to do is ask for a second to my motion.
Okay. All right, so um, so right now, there is, there has been uh, the appealing of the ruling of the chair. All right, Ms. what, pardon? Good day, sir.
Madam Chair.
My name has been said. And this is for ruling, Ms. Lindsey Carter, out of order for yelling at the chair. And proceed.
And Madam Chair, um, point of order, Madam Chair.
What did you?
You need to ask for a second for my motion. I made a motion.
Okay.
May I hear the motion? Yeah, I want a motion.
She don't want. And here we have.
Point of order. Um, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Carter did put a motion on the floor first. And then it was, so you did not ask for a second. You, you skipped over that. And so, and she points that on, trying for the chair to ask, because they were standing.
Go ahead.
She actually appealed her ruling for more than she was coming in, then she made a motion to.
So, um, so, um, Madam clerk, just wanna go to verify the right. So Ms. um, Lindsey Carter, she received a warning. And then she put a motion on the floor to remove you for chair the rest of the week. Is that what you received?
What I.
Stand on the next one.
Lindsey Carter said, uh, we did remind, she wanted to appeal, so she turned out. She's gonna make a motion and say remove you as the chair, please, and the next.
Okay, so, so the removal of the chair came out of the bill, correct?
She never really said she was going to do the appeal.
Okay, so, so you got that the appeal for the warning had been dropped and we wanted to remove you from the evening, is that what you got?
She said she should appeal, don't go, I heard a motion to remove you.
Please say it again to my manager.
She was going to do the appeal, but then she said, here's the favor, we can remove you. But her saying was that she's making a motion to remove you as the chair, please, and the next.
Okay, and, and please hold. And so, and so, would that also, would that second by Ms. Byrne? So, Miss Byrne, what did you say?
Madam Chair, for the record, because you're incapable, keep it a record, I second both.
All right. This is where the court comes into play, where colleagues state what you're uncancellable of. This is the hospital working environment. So, so first, what I heard was on the morning, I didn't hear her extract the warning. So she said that she's seconding both. So we're gonna go ahead with the seconding of both with Ms. Byrne. So first, we will go with the warning. And then second, we adopt with the removal of meeting for chair for for special, for, I'm gonna be prepared to say for the rest of the.
For, for special affairs as well as the council meeting. Because we're being here all night.
Got it. Removal of chair. From special affairs and council meeting. All right, so now we're going straight to um, to the warning first. So, all right. So go ahead, Ms. Lindsey Carter, you have been warned for, for um, yelling at, at the chair and being on the corner. So go ahead.
You know what? It's a shame that the residents come here to be engaged in this process and you treat them like they're second-class citizens. It's a shame. You, you keep giving residents worries. And with Sister Mohammed, you gotta call, actually call out her name. You didn't need to call out her name. And really, all you needed to do was say, over here in this section, please calm down. Audience, please calm down so we can hear. Stop being nasty to the residents. They have the reason that you're sitting up here in this seat. Last week, you put out one of your residents, they came up, came down, you didn't hear. You gotta stop doing that. It's not about you. You sit up here like you're some type of dictator. And you're gonna dictate every, dictate to all of us sitting up here. And I'm tired of it. I sit here and I watch everything that's going on. I hardly ever say a word, but when you're sitting here and you're hearing all comments here and there, and you never stop, uh, Councilwoman Worthy, you never, never stop.
Ever.
But you wanna, but yet you wanna put the residents out. This chamber belongs to the residents. You can't control them. And yeah, I got upset, and I'm gonna continue to get upset because I'm gonna stay with the residents. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. I wouldn't be in the room. So I can't be playing with this, but I've been playing with a whole lot of stuff. And that's okay, I got thick skin, I'm a fire, I'm a true. But I'm already listening to what's going on. I'm gonna show you an example of what happened when I did turn in the room. And I want folks who ain't really been here watching to hear what I'm gonna say. I went in the room and paid for it. Oh, something, but when I came back in the room, the highest privileged motion under council rules, the highest privileged motion under Robert's rules is point of order. When you said point of order, all talking to seats and the chairs to say, what's your point? That didn't happen. She said, we're in a pause. And then she did three more other people, their names come back to me yet. Did y'all notice that?
Yes.
My point of order was to see what was going on. I've been sitting here council person. Been here for ten years and the chair changed me like a PR and tossed off the roof. Not just the men. But that's why I come up with the term here with basis. Discrimination and different treatment has no place on this council. It has no place in our society. Don't discriminate against me in favor of misworthiness repeatedly. That's why I use the term hankered cheap head. Look it up. It ain't a bad cuss word, it's what it is. And so I see it every week, been seeing it for four, five, six months. And now men people condone that. That's why we live here at your close, Ms. Masek. We know word is on both our step. We've seen Quincy and Dale both our step. I was proud of Mr. Murphy today. He just broke our step. Our warning to men, it moved the meat along. Y'all gotta quit condoning wrongdoing. You gotta quit condoning discriminatory treatment. Because if we don't, since a majority of council, you perpetrate that. We used to say when I was third vice president at the L S C P. Those who are quiet and say nothing on wrongdoing is just as wrong as the wrongdoing.
That's it.
God bless us all.
Anyone else want to speak on this?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthy.
It is very hard to hear what's going on when we have audience members screaming out, and it's been constant and very loud. And no, you cannot control their behavior because they are adults, but what you can do is give them a warning and then they must leave if they cannot be quiet. That is the rules. There's nothing funny about it. There's no need to scream, insult others about what it is, just what it is. And if you were being the one screamed at, uh, you would have a problem with them. But it's because it's a political enemy of yours that you defend this atrocious behavior, and let's just call that out. These are political games. Um, people are brought here to these meetings that support Eric Mays and others. And they are here to cause chaos, uh, scream at us, uh, harass us because they don't like us trying to get the business done. I'm calling it out.
Excuse me, ma'am, that is the third time I've spoke to you. So, and Mr. Mitchell, please. Go on, go on. Go on, man.
Request reformation.
What do you want for what?
Do you, Ms. Worthy, do you think people support right or wrong or Eric Mays? You really believe that I have these people girl on this here talking about right or wrong?
Where your supporters at?
I'm claiming my time. So, um, I don't bring supporters. And again, this is tall, just shouted at me, again. Where are your supporters, she said? Um, I told them not to come because of people like you.
Oh my gosh, oh my god.
I see it.
Because of rule twenty-seven point two.
All being with the audience.
And not become argumentative with, yes, yes, about, excuse me, and she's talking while I'm talking. Y'all know these rules so much. She cannot become argumentative, she obviously with the tall. And she became argumentative. She needs to get.
A warning.
She won't, that's the second time she been doing it tonight.
Ms. Worthy, uh, according to point seven point two, you cannot argue with residents. And residents cannot yell out.
Man, yo, that's a warning. You gave me a warning. You gave me a warning.
Proceed.
Oh, oh, man, look at this.
She did it to me first. She won't give her a.
See, that's the bullshit, right? And then she goes, yeah, what is it?
She did it to me first.
She said, man, for real. And didn't even, didn't even tell me, all right, you want me to warn you.
Throughout this meeting, um, many have said, warn this working, I've not said anything, but then my colleagues over there have been talking this whole time during the meeting, signing and saying things, and yet we say, warn this working. My name comes up a lot for me to just be sitting here and trying to just do a word. Um, again, this is orchestration. This is a bullying tactic to try to support TikTok racism. Mr. Mays is taking money off of this chaos, and that's disgusting. And he uses audience members to come in so that he can earn more money on TikTok.
Oh my. Eric, I want my money.
All y'all need to get up and walk out.
Order in the chambers. Order in these chambers. If we can't, if we can't have order in the chamber, then we will ask all Quincy and other members to leave. If you wanna remain in this meeting as a spectator, we demand order in these chambers.
What a sad day that Flint is known for its chaos dysfunction.
Uh, Matt Cap, who please come to this side of the audience so we can have order in the chambers.
Hey, man, y'all need to get up and walk out.
Ms. Mr. Wilson is encouraging them to break court. Please do not yell out, Mr. Wilson.
I ain't yelling shit. I'm gonna tell him, man, shut the fuck up talking to me. For real, I can say something to somebody.
You're breaking rule twenty-seven point two. You cannot become argumentative with the audience. You just said, Mr. Wilson talked in the break court. You are being argumentative. Give yourself a warning. You, excuse me? Warn yourself. You have a dumpster fire again, this is on you.
Again. Back to you, Ms. Worthy. Please proceed, thirty-two seconds.
Thank you. I, I'm saddened that this is what the city has been reduced to, um, chaos dysfunction, and it's purposeful. Um, my colleague cannot speak her mind because people are shouting at her constantly. And they're trying to make her look like a bad chair, uh, because they don't like that she will keep the medium order. And, um, again, Eric Mays is making money off of you in this city by purposely creating chaos. And that's disgusting.
Anyone else want to speak on this?
This, this, this is a dog, for real. Your tone of voice, um, councilman, um, Winfrey Carter, that's what you say is how you say it. And even, I'm sitting here listening to the audience, the young man in the grave, uh, from Raleigh. I never ever hear him. I hear, uh, the young lady in the front, and I also hear the young man in the front all the time. And I know if I hear them, you guys hear them. And when we could nothing, I should have the meeting, it is not appropriate for the, I hear people on this side. And as much as he did it when he was out there. Saying things that they don't agree with, they in the audience, and she, and, um, our chairperson is only trying to keep control of the council meeting. And I don't understand how y'all have a problem with the, um, chair ha- uh, trying to keep some order. If I hear it, I know the chairperson here, and sometimes the chairpeople, I be like, now you get John here, you chair, so you gotta conduct yourself. So how can you sit up there and, um, chair a meeting and then you constantly hearing people in the front saying things? Cause I hear y'all. Brother, y'all think we don't hear y'all, we know, I do, we hear y'all, I hear them over there. And we just constantly hearing them while we up here trying to conduct meeting, but it's okay for them to sit up there and be, um, making comments in the audience, and we supposed to be okay with that? No, whoever, the chair, whether she be the chair tonight or don't be the chair, whoever chair this meeting, gotta have control of this meeting. Other than that, we gonna still be sitting here, we ain't even in a sitting council meeting yet, cause we sitting up here dealing with these petty situations that we dealing with now, because y'all don't want the chairperson to check the audience when they out there talking and, um, get the blur out, it don't work like that. And then when she trying to check the audience, you trying to check her, and then you raising your voice so loud. It ain't what you say is how you say it, and you don't have to talk so loud when you, um, making your point of law, that's what I'm saying.
Request information, so Councilman Murphy, what are you doing right now?
Right, right.
My voice is loud?
Proceed.
Thank you very much. So here we are, this morning, nine to five, we still in special repairs, sitting council meeting, just starting at five thirty. We ain't even start this city council meeting yet, cause we here. I'll be supporting the chair.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Murphy.
According to rule twenty seven point two, during any portion of any meeting, council members may not engage with any type of argumentative discourse with members of the audience at any time, for any reason. You failed to warn yourself, you failed to warn this Worthy, both of you should receive the warning. You're not an effective chair. We been here for four and a half hours, you're rude, you're mean, you're disrespectful, you are. You make little moves with your eyes and things. Your colleagues don't respect you because you took money from Ashley Capital. I don't. That is very guilty, you're not applicable. And of course, Councilman Murphy wouldn't have any problems with what, uh, you talking to the audience, or you making, you know, whatever you do, because he had no problem both you and him taking money from Ashley Capital. So therefore, there gonna be a problem. So when we talk about, you wanna go off on the audience, you threw out every time, you choose to weaponize the police against the residents. You doing everything, that's what you do. And I'm gonna urge you and advise you to not keep going after R.L. He is protected by the American Disabilities Act, if you need to understand that.
Amen.
She would be protected.
You don't go after every single body, you can't do that. Then you, when you get that cluster, take that, hey, fly to the reset. Ask Judy or Dennis or one of these chairs who can take over, then you become overwhelmed. But what you have shown is consistent in how you chair, you can't chair. You can't chair. It doesn't matter what evil Worthy says, you're going to let her just go where she should have got a warning. You should have warned herself, and you okay with it. I never seen anything like it. But then you want to say these rabid rules, I have to enforce the rules, setting of course, no means of hypocritical. So yes, Councilman Winfrey Carter, don't get upset, cause we got free, every meeting you chair, you throwing out the residents. And you have something that you're a resident. You throw Audrey Mahoney, she in your court, you throw Miss Slade, don't she in your court, and sleeping in her room. You're not even returning her calls. So when we talk about not having a chair, you don't need the chair because it's going to be a dumpster fire. And for the record, that is not Tommy Byrne signing. When Candace is nerfing, I just, she signed, that's not me. When you hear the signing, when you stated, people are signing. I mean, when we talk about what's happening, there's so much going on here, it's just ridiculous. I wanna have a meeting, y'all worry about time, but the same thing that you say that you warned us for, you break that rule yourself. Every single time you break that rule. Every time. You need to remove this chair, period, and I hope my colleagues when it comes to time, and y'all go through, you can get out of here.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Manager.
Um, Ms. Carter.
Um, I hope the pastors that did the press conference realize what we're dealing with.
I hope they see.
And I love how my colleague in the ninth ward is so innocent. You innocent, Jeffrey Donner was a vegetarian.
Yeah, you, you talking about his kids.
Talking about discourse, you literally got into it with, uh, the young lady in the first row, what are you looking at?
Yep, thank you, Dennis, thank you, Dennis.
You want, you want to point out talk that we disagree with, or don't disagree with. But someone you agree with, you have to put the earplug. And for the record, um, chairing is one of the most stressful but greatest opportunities we have as a city to move the city forward. The, the record will show, every meeting that I have chaired, I've never thrown an audience member out. I've thrown, I've removed one person from the meeting for argumentative discourse, and that was the councilperson in the ninth ward. I've never given the person in the first ward a warning, the second person, the second ward a warning. I've never given any of those folks a warning because it's all about chairing and being able to talk to folks and have argumentative discourse without interruption and absolute chaos.
Here we go.
What is your request?
My question for the councilman in the eighth ward is, is insulting your colleagues and telling us that there's a, um, National Cheeseburger Day, and Candace is that?
That was on Facebook, that was on nine.
That was, that's, that's a warning. That's a warning. That's a warning. That's a warning.
I hope the pastor sees this.
That is valid, request information.
She ain't gonna warn him.
Out of point of order.
That's a warning, man.
Please stop this time.
That's a warning, you giving everybody else a warning?
Madam Chair. National Cheeseburger Day is not valid, it is not germane, and you have got to warn her. That is a warning.
She won't.
Ms. Murphy, she asked Mr. Piper.
Man, go.
They asked the question earlier. So, Mr. Piper, he can either answer, or he can proceed.
Wow. I feel the ruling of the chair.
Wow.
Not the one, this is actually, this is the number, I feel the ruling of the chair, the decision, I feel the thirty-five, I'm sure it's a warning. Ms. Worthy, so I feel you.
Alright, so this is the field. How many takes this practical? Field ruling of the chair.
Man, all of them need to get up and walk out, man. That's what they need to do. And I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll let you down.
Oh, that's my man.
Alright, so, um, going back to, um, call people, is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Alright. Alright, so go back to the first appeal for Mrs. Carter, um, Winfrey Carter's warning. Um, Mr. Piper, you were speaking.
Um, I, I said what I said, uh, about this, about this, uh, here. We wanna hold the audience to a different standard, but we have such rules in front of us, they don't. There was no agreement of disorderly person subsection before this meeting, the rules aren't posted back there. Some folks may know our rules, some folks may not, but we're holding everybody up to a higher standard, but uh, we're not giving them the tools to succeed. So until we post the rules back there that we're expecting them to, to hold them up there, holding them up to their stand, up to our standard, then I don't understand how we can continue to throw out our tax-paying citizens that pay our council salary and voted less than. That, to me, is a derelict duty on our, on our standard.
Alright, anyone else in the, in the, um, first round and home round, um, Winfrey Carter appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Michelle.
So, what's been asked in this meeting several times is that the audience refrain from yelling. It's been asked several times. I say this with the understanding that the motions are heightened and passions are running. I feel like with Miss Winfrey Carter, that is what happened. She was upset, her voice was running high, I do agree with Mr. Murphy, uh, it was the way you said, how, how you were yelling and all that, like you got like, I do agree with that. But then also, here's the fact that it's got, it's got it both ways. The audience has been asked several times to refrain from yelling out, this is a professional meeting. We have to, see, see? You, you say don't put you out, but then you do this. The reality is that we have to be professional, we have to act as in the forum. You go watch city council meetings from all over the country, there are rules. There are rules, there are rules for how the council must behave, there are rules for how the audience must behave. Disorderly conduct is a thing, you can, you're yelling out right now. As I'm sitting here trying to defend your right to be impassioned, but at the same time, it's hard to defend, it keeps happening. I get it, I get it, y'all are upset, there are things that are happening that you do not agree with. After this meeting, we have a regular council meeting where you have another opportunity to come to that podium and let it rip once again. And I am all for your right to do that. But during these meetings, and the obvious truth is, there have been a lot of times where y'all have been yelling out and nothing was said. Nothing was said, like, at the end of the day, the reality is, everybody has to conduct themselves better, audience included. And I get exactly where Miss Winfrey Carter was coming from in the sense that she's upset that she feels like the residents were not being heard, or she felt like the rules were not being firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. The rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. This warning could have been dropped, and we could have moved on. The rules do have to firmly apply to everybody. The rules do have to firmly apply to everybody.
So, we have a request for information.
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say, can you say that one more?
I'm just gonna say, we're trying to make this back at the audience, the rules do have to be firmly applied to everybody. So this is one of those situations where we split the bait. Audience, please respect what's going on up here, please refrain from yelling out as much as possible, I get it, I get it, I get it. After this meeting though, you have another opportunity, another council meeting, to go ahead and let it rip, Miss Winfrey Carter.
Amy, 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 anyone else who would like to speak? Alright, so seeing that there is no one else, I'll go ahead and speak. Our council, our, our child effects fixer, you know, you must have the phone. Calling Miss Winfrey Carter, she began to yell at me, and she knew that she was yelling, she told me to give her a warning. I gave exactly, she understood, and I gave her a warning. And then she appealed the ruling of the chair. I'm not harking at anyone, I don't wanna see anyone ejected. But what we need to see is, are pe- we need to see people following the rules. And one thing that we do know, just like kids know in school, you do not yell out unless your teacher called on you, or unless you're doing an activity that requires they want to yell out. Ms. Michelle, she said, raise the same way. This is a professional body. Regardless of contrary belief, this is a professional body, and we must conduct ourselves likewise. And for those that come to participate with this professional body, you must be held to the same standard. I didn't kick the lady out because, um, who's, I, I, my resident out for no reason. What I did was, I brought her to order, she refused to get an order, she begins to argue and yell at me. You are, this is not, this, this feel like this is identity politics. Whatever that this chair does, I get attacked. The fact that this chair is upholding the rules, I'm getting attacked.
Oh my god.
We have to make sure that we are in order. Anything else is uncivilized. So for the audience, I've warned the audience several times. And I also stated that according to our rules, it says that if the councilman do not recognize according to rule twenty eight point one, you cannot speak aloud. That means you're causing a disturbance. If you call a disturbance, you're being disorderly. According to the disorderly person subsection, you are audience members as well as council members. If you receive, you receive one warning for being disorderly. The second time, you are brought to order for being disorderly, that is removal, and that is under our city code subsection. So no one is removed from this meeting without receiving their second warning. Council member and audience members alike.
Request information.
What is your request?
But isn't our people that you not applying equally among council members? And the audience see that, do you understand what you're saying, you ain't doing an equi application or better?
That's an improper call. The point of order of public information, they are used to find out information that you don't know otherwise.
What she just said, what did she just say? What did she, what did Eva just do?
With that being said.
What did Eva just do?
It is very unfortunate that we are here, and I hope everyone is witnessing what is happening. So with this being said, a death vote will overturn the ruling of the chair. A no vote will uphold the ruling of the chair. And giving Miss Winfrey Carter her requested warning. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
No.
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Now. Miss Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy, yes, Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
There is a call, Madam Chair. She said everyone, about five or six times.
The bonus five, yes, we know, the ruling of the chair is overturned, so next. So next, uh, we are going the, uh, the motion to rem- for removal. Meet from chair, that's what they're, and from council meeting. And so, in the seventh part.
We had another appeal.
Uh, you are right, you are right, it was in the field, it was the field. It was a field, um, of the ruling of the chair for not warning Miss Worthy. Okay? Alright, so, then in the field, the ruling of the chair for not warning Miss Worthy, um, and seconded by Ms. Burns. So, go ahead.
Madam Chair, sometimes you have to take kindly. Some people might call it a waste of time when we do these appeals, but the only way to educate the community and ourselves is to do these appeals. And so, for months and months, you know, we've been saying, you gotta warn this word that this is you wanting. You gotta rule that this word that's points of order, that's points of information that are out of order. Just like you said, ma'am, 'cause I really don't believe they do be out of order, more so than hers. And it's a pattern. It's a pattern. And if it a customer, you got some really noted urban meaning in two thousand and twenty-three, and why Clarence Thomas' name comes up, you say, "Hank, a chief head," it's a reference. Now, this word that can shake her hand, but you plan to her, perfe- propose. And I would say, Mr. Piper, you, in my opinion, had been both wrong, but it's just this chair that Michelle has, but she voted right on this one. And you got the right to vote right and wrong. But when your eyes open up and you really look at what's going on, there's got to be this equal application of rules. You can't keep throwing black folks out and let white folks get away with murder. You can't throw the white folks out and let black folks get away with murder. It ain't about rights and rights, it's about wrong and right. You gotta do an equal application of rules, don't you notice? Counsel off balance and you ride up the button. Madam Chair, if you wrong, you gotta admit, I'm out of order. I'm not recognizing points of order. You done that? Tonight, that's out of order. You should have your first warning. Dude, you get out of order intentionally, I'm telling you. But it's clear, I said, one warning, you haven't came back to me yet. You get frustrated. It's difficult to check, but y'all on it, it's in your person. You wanted to go to your own chair and talk about it, now you know it's difficult. This ain't any only job shaking, this is real council. Multi-million dollar business. Discriminatory action. Me, Winfrey Carter, others, we ain't gonna put up with it. We've been in the civil rights movement, I know, we ain't gonna turn our back on the fight here, but equality.
Alright, anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Piper.
Yep. I think the councilwoman on the seventh floor stated it correctly, that they have to be, um, the, the rules have to be applied equally. And your constant and insistent refusal, refusal to warn colleague of that word is ridiculous to us. And that's, and that's the problem, and that's what riles up the audience, that, that's the double standard, that everyone is seen. When you have rules, you can't, I mean, you want to throw this thing down, so we got the audience speaking there. For doing a request for information. But when the colleague of that board does it, you might give her a, after you get called out, you give her a, uh, you know, as an offer, you may not want to say that, but you, I don't think you ever give her a warning. So, when we talked about the double standard and the way that means to the chair, it's obvious that you only target certain peoples or certain members of the council. It's, and, you know, maybe, maybe I was blind to that in the past, but maybe the illegal, uh, contribution. So, this is, and this is why there's a motion at the best or the meeting for chair, because you want to pick and choose who you want to apply the rules to. And that's not the way it should be, right? If I'm out of order, I should be called, I should be given a warning, the same as any other colleagues. For the most part, I vote on decorum issues the way that I feel the decorum issue was violated. And right now, it's hard to hold members accountable for decorum when one of the biggest violators is the chair. I want to vote against the chair, and hopefully, we have enough colleagues that, uh, we can finally give a warning to the member of that board for misconduct. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this?
No. Good work. It's really funny that Mr. Piper said misconduct when he called you a name at the last meeting. You got a little criticized?
You wasn't here, you wasn't here.
Request information. Request information, Madam Chair. Uh, do you realize you called me a name? You called Miguel. Did you apologize for that? Brother, you said, "Guel," or she acted, "Guel," you didn't apologize.
No, then you didn't apologize. So, I'm still waiting. Um, it's really, it, it, it's really funny that Mr. Piper, he really likes to look like he's so professional. And yet, he's been on social media insulting all of his colleagues. Um, and
What relevance does the ruling of that path to which it pertains to this appeal?
Um, probably the same, well, Mr. Piper? Again, here we are, listening to you. And let, let, let's just pause this where we are, just so we can go forward with the clarity. The same relevance that has to the same relevance you're talking about me taking illegal campaign funds. So, we gotta be fair. So, let her proceed to speak. So, your point of order, I'm going to deny it, because in that case, you were out of order too, as well as other colleagues for, um, for saying that, and honestly, that's against proper rules. You're not supposed to vote back. You're not supposed to refer to, um, to back against items. But nevertheless, the point is, you said, what does that have to do with this motion? The same thing it had to do with when you brought it. What's your point?
As, as in this appeal, and the previous appeal was on, was made during the resolution to suspend you for taking the funds?
We, we called, we called you to appeal for Miss Winfrey Carter, and that's when you made your comment. So, point of order denied, back to Miss Worthy.
Thank you. Um, many like to dish it out, but just can't take it, and it comes back to them, it's constant. Um, now that I'm here to do that, because here we are, getting nothing done. And I, we heard residents say, this name-calling, um, yelling, not getting things done, it's not productive. And what time is it? Nine thirty. We've not even gotten to the council. Um, so, uh, I, I don't know how this city is going to move forward.
Get rid of you.
Um, we cannot just, and they're shouting out again. Um, if we cannot
Request information.
What is your request?
Madam Chair, they might say something, they was not shouting. Do you realize that this word, that was not shouting?
Ms. May, that's, that's the problem. Let her proceed. Go ahead.
And then there's constant interruptions, but then other people are waiting for them. It's, it's maddening, we get nothing done. Um, it's embarrassing. And to have professional people here, like Dr. Mona, that have to put up with this type, it's looking embarrassing. I don't know how people who sit here with professionals, um, sitting here, trying to improve this city, trying to help us, and we are here to call names, screen others, um, I, I, there's not much to defend there. We've not gotten to any business. So, what is, I'm gonna ask this again, what is your purpose of being on this council? Is it for political points? Is it to, to be famous? Or is it to get the work in the city done?
Looks like it.
Because I don't see the business getting done. And so, if you're part of that, then you're the problem. I want to vote on issues, not people or personalities. I'd like to get through a meeting, um, without screaming. Uh, this, I mean, this is beyond any classroom. This would not happen in any school and be tolerated. Uh, so, let's do better. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Um, Ms. Burns?
Thank you. So, this limitless loyalty is ridiculous. You do not apply the rules evenly nor fairly, and that's who we want. And that's why your meetings are so out of control. You're out of control. If the audience or the members of the community saw you being fair, then it would be outrage. Your behavior is outrageous. When people were being called, uh, the black woman on the council ghetto, she called the first ward residence a cult. You actually took Facebook, and I'm gonna read what you wrote, because these are in your work, you quote mine. It said, "You don't ever do this. You're not a true, a factual person." Went second ward, and you said this to another person, especially racist comments all the time. You deal with races, like the same person who called my daughter a monkey. See, I got beat with you forever on that. So, Tracy Whitty says, went second ward, says, "Tracy Whitty always thinks gaslight makes it a racial issue when it's not. When is she continued to break the rules by unlawfully taking the floor? Then was pointing towards words and saying, 'Today isn't going to be your day.'" Totally out of control. That could be interpreted as a threat. Then Eva stood up, which was out of order, and began going back and forth with Burns. "If calling fair game makes me a Hanker Chief Ed, I will wear it with pride." Do that, if you call yourself a Hanker Chief Ed. You keep protecting this woman who is a clear racist. Something is so very wrong with you. So very wrong. You want to try it out here, mind, you saw my daughter's picture, that they put her wedding picture. You came to make some silly little comment, what you did that was denouncing. If your child was on there to tell, "You know, I don't care," I would have defended you. You go back and forth with this crazy lady, and that makes you part of a problem. We get work done when you're not here and you're not here. Everything, we got caught up. We had eighteen resolutions down, we're moving you from chair. She wasn't here. She is a problem. And you feed off that, you can't detach yourself from it. And it's unfortunate, because you could have had the capability to be a great chair, but you're not. All your meetings result in a dumpster fire. You can't say, "I'm a victim," and then say, "I'm a Hanker Chief Ed." Which one is it? You said you cried when you defended her for calling black people ghetto, and she didn't acknowledge it. And for the record, I never called the press, the press about her calling people ghetto. I don't know if she called, but I still don't have that much time. Well, she called me narcissistic asshole also in front of the city attorney. So, hurt her out this time.
So, Ms. May, that request information? Did I tell you?
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order. That was a quick inquiry to Ms. Burns. It had nothing to do with you. Quit grooming on that meeting.
Deny, you have to be in order. Make sure to defend our rule.
Please, please, don't see, Ms. Burns. Again, you do not apply the rules to Miss Worthy, you do not apply it to yourself, which makes you a very poor leader and to chair. We can't lead, they'll follow you if you don't know how to lead.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this appeal?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Listen, to my colleagues, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to you, you guys go back and forth. And I would encourage all of you guys to be posting about each other on all
Yes, question.
Y'all spending a lot of time on, and I'm sitting up here, listening to y'all and learning stuff that I didn't know, that colleagues done posted about other colleagues on Facebook. And it's just ridiculous. And it's getting out of control, and now it's feeling into a city council, and here we are, and city council talking about Facebook.
That's it. That's it.
Aside from Facebook, have you been here for months watching some of this stuff, ain't you?
Making moves.
He was on the national. All I'm saying is, y'all should examine yourself. And Paul here said it, um, is what I'm about to post on Facebook, is this uplifting or is it tearing them down? And even if y'all see somebody posting about one of y'all colleagues on Facebook, why are y'all even commenting on it? And even if y'all comment, or y'all see something, you know, um, somebody told me about a post that my colleague in the, um, ninth ward, I mean, the eighth ward posted, and I said, "Oh, that's not, that's not his character, that's not his moral, that's just not who we are." As a person, I just couldn't see myself. One thing you won't ever see me doing, and I have not done since I've been on city council. You do not see me posting on Facebook on things that people say about me, because they talk about Jesus, so whatever. And I understand that I'm in a position that people may not always agree. And I look at people when people say, "Dude, I, that, when I ran for office, I knew this was coming my way." So, if somebody's saying something about me and I don't agree with it, I'm not going on Facebook. They have a right to not agree with me and to make their post about. What I won't do is if you won't see me, if somebody posted about Tanya, or Jerry, or Ladel, or Eva, I'm not going to like it. I'm not going to comment on it.
He don't.
I'm going to leave you alone, because y'all still, it's my colleagues, and we should be like family. As, um, sticking up and supporting one another when we out there in the public. Instead, we sitting up here, um, viewing with each other on Facebook and bringing it back to the city council, and we still ain't got the business done because we too busy talking about what somebody posted on Facebook. And we adults, we supposed to be setting the example.
You're right.
This is ridiculous.
He don't, he don't.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Miss Winfrey Carter?
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna say this. You got to apply the rules fairly. You got to apply the rules equally. You got to apply the rules fairly. Thank you.
Alright. Anyone else?
Hey, they getting ready.
So, seeing that that's why, um, the ruling of the chair, saying that the chair do not warn Miss Worthy, this is what we have here. For one, when Miss Worthy was speaking, unfortunately, for all the people speaking as well. And so, again, the home is on the council members, not to be argumentative. And so, again, the home is on the council members not to be argumentative. At the same time, the home is on for the council, excuse me, for the audience member to be in order. So you can't yell out, and she can't yell at you. So it shouldn't be going both ways. And so.
Go ahead. Does this appeal about discourse with the audience, or is it more improper request or information based on chief of the council?
No, no, but this appeal of the ruling of the chair for not, um, warning Ms. Worthing.
Porter Cheeseburg.
Now, I didn't pick the, just privilege.
I, I appeal because you would warn her when she interrupted with a very close, and that was not a point. Like you do us, that's the appeal, all the time, man, they're crazy up in there.
Not a problem, not a problem. So I was in a question that, that the ruling of the chair was appealed because she was talking to the audience member. That's where I thought it came from. However, so going back to, um, to what the appeal did, that she used an improper, um, request for information, I believe, a request for information. And I just, you said I didn't warn her. She asked, she asked Mr. Piper a question.
A matter of cheeseburger.
She asked Mr. Piper a question, and the question was a valid question. Mr. Piper had the opportunity to either ignore her, make his speaking, or answer the question. The, we begin to get into muddy waters when we start doing request for information. When you are purposely trying to take the floor. That, if we read rules twenty-six point one to twenty-six point four. This is what, this is what we're saying. And then it says, using request for information is an opportunity, people using a request for information as an opportunity to gain the floor not allowed. Multiple abuses of request for information is caused for disciplinary action. For one, she asked a question, and for two, that was the one time that she asked Mr. Piper. So this, the rules twenty-six point four says for multiple abuses of request for information is caused for disciplinary action. So therefore, the chair did not give her a warning for doing it, according to these council rules. So with that being said, if you want to overturn. Go ahead.
Didn't you warn Mr. May?
Yep.
No, Mr. May was on utilizing his third point of authority.
No, he wasn't, it was the first.
So, so we have video to show, please review it at your leisure. But what we're about to do now is, and so if you would like to overturn the ruling of the chair, please go yes, that's fine. But if the chair did nothing wrong, according to rule twenty-six point four, please go no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes, no.
No. Ms. May?
Yes.
Chris Lewis? No.
I stand, because this is ridiculous.
Yes. Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ms. McShad?
No.
Go to the four yes, three no, one extension.
So she don't get a warning?
Three no, one extension, the, um, the ruling of the chair stands. And so, um, now we are back to. So now you're on, so excuse me, the motion to remove me from chair. And it is, has been moved around the section. So who had the first one?
Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Madam Chair, I don't know if this is gonna be five votes, but what's important, it ain't just removing Eva's chair of this special affairs. I'm understanding it's chair of the council meeting as well. Now here we got one, two, only three residents. One of them has to do with Dr. Mona, Batisha Hanan. And the other two has to do with you and Quincy. I don't expect cooperation from you, Mr. Murphy. And Mr. Murphy, in some good speeches you give, it about my Facebook, but you was dog in the app. And this dog in the app called it be a disgrace to council and they did that, and if you gonna be here. I've been here for ten years. We done went through water crisis, emergency, marriage, budget deficit. That ain't true, but you said you knew. You had this, Louis condoned each other's activity, tag team, bad and right, left and right. So saying it to my face, because where it's been saying it on Facebook. So be careful, being a hypocrite about what people see and shit to do with their colleagues, but you're a dog. The app needed this record to my place. And then you keep voting, condoning with certain votes. That's why I said it's dangerous to do. Now, this is, I don't expect for you to vote to suspend Ms. Lewis from chairing these meetings. You got stepped up, you weren't here, she wasn't here, Eva Worthy wasn't here. We cut all that work up. Because for three, four weeks prior, we was getting bogged down with her trying to throw council people and others out. And somebody said, oh, man, we gotta deal with the elephant in the room. We definitely deterred the elephant in the room, and we got the work done. And I know y'all heard about it, because y'all weren't here. Now, it don't matter to me if I have to be in council chambers for two, three in the morning. Pastor Harris, I ain't embarrassed to tell you, but Pastor May is new. We be out for six in the morning, partying. What I care about being up to two is one, eleven to do with this and that, any festering. Is better than being out partying. Let nobody fool you about the length of meetings. Everything we do is a purpose for the future. And we address these appeals and different treatment, that's a purpose. When we do resolutions and meals up multi-reading hours, that's a purpose. We wouldn't even be sitting in these seats if we didn't stop in our passion and our experience to address civil rights and discrimination and different treatment. Don't let nobody fool y'all with that rhetoric. Get it stepped up. Equal and fair treatment is part of American history for blacks to get stepped up. So Ms. Lewis, I'm gonna vote as it moves you from this meeting and the council meeting again. We can apply due step, but we might not have five votes. Ms. Priestley can remove herself from all of these important civil rights discussions, in my opinion. I mean, I know how to go back and forth. She sitting back there with the woman trying to recall if they got reported business. That's that same shirt Pastor Harris I seen on TV with you and Chris Prime, remember? She standing in the bunch, they saying they really gathered to talk about his use of the term monkey. And Chris Martin talking about houses and the deal getting stepped toe down, and she standing with that shirt. You gotta be careful who you rolling. We, the UAW Democrats strong, they say Biden gonna be here tomorrow, Trump coming, but guess what? She said us Republicans, probably, exactly the rule. It means something, I understand you're putting him in politics. I'm gonna see what we can get done.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round? Ms. Murphy?
Thank you so much. My colleague in the first ward always love to, um, write my name out. The one thing I want you to know, um, two things for certain, Councilman Murphy and the word of law for a scare on nothing that you got to think about me, in my opinion. And I ain't never been, um, shy of hiding my feelings on how I feel about how you conduct yourself. Um, I'm not gonna be supporting this motion to, um, remove Councilman, one, um, Dr. Lewis because the audience were just as far as, um, Dr. Lewis were trying to keep some order. Um, if she do everything right, no, we can't sustain a room for a booing, yes.
What went wrong? So, what did I do wrong?
Uh-oh.
I'm done.
Yes, um, Madam Chair. You ready to get enough, um, Councilman Murphy? I made that motion, because you know what? Here it is, nine fifty-two. Sometimes the, a chairperson is supposed to facilitate the meeting. A chairperson's job is to keep everyone, everyone, the council members as well as the residents engaged in the meeting. It should not be handled with a, um, a, 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 um, six. You know? It should be just move through with no interruptions. You should be fair. You should be actively listening to your, um, colleagues. You should let your colleagues speak. You should, um, you should, if they, if they go over a millisecond of, 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 uh, 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 minute, a second, or whatever, you should say, okay, can you, uh, wrap it up? I mean, you should give some type of la, latitude. But you don't.
Request information.
Well, your plate.
Mr. Murphy Carter, are you aware that, like I called someone's name to ask him if he remembers the conversation?
Yeah, I do remember that, yeah. And I thought that, I thought that was in bad taste. Request information. What are your thoughts? Ms. Murphy Carter, are you aware that we were saying you go back and watch the video? Well, it was slithering something. Yeah, it, it was slithering something, I don't know. But, but, but you know what? That's neither say or name, whatever. I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, we gotta get out of here.
We have a front order.
Ms. Murphy Carter, on the order for calling that for information?
Are you?
I know you ain't.
Are you high order? Okay, but this is what I'm saying, it has to be fair. It has to be fair. You have to, um, fac- facilitate the meeting fairly. And that's it. I'll be voting yes to remove, um, the chair from special affairs as well as the council meeting, so that we can get out of here.
All right, anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair. Removing you from chair in this meeting is such as having me, and Council Murphy will get in trouble.
Have a mark.
Because you have to be able to take charge of the criticism. And the chair is going to be subject to criticism, because you're over the meeting, you, you're over this room, basically. And when audience, when we see you chair unfairly, and the rules are not equally applied, you're gonna have a problem. You shoot your colleagues no respect. You don't. Trying to appeal to your better sense of fair play has not worked in almost a year. It has not worked. You told us who you were, and we should have believed you, as Dr. Michel said. When someone shows you the first time, you gotta believe them. You told us in this meeting, when you were going off at Mr. Dumas, because he called your personal cell phone. And you told him you are not the same person when you are here as when you're out there. Here you get Dr. Lewis. You didn't know how he got your personal cell phone, but you didn't want to call him. You're not a fair person. You're, you're not a fair person, even, and he's a resident. You, you've warned him numerous times, you put Miss May Billups, she's a resident, you put Miss Arjuna Mohammed out. I mean, you just go off on, these are your residents. They, they're yours. And I would think that because they are registered voters, that you would show more latitude or be kinder to them. Because they're able to talk to the neighbors and friends about you, and just, they can speak better to your character and to your integrity, because they're in these council chambers. So when it comes to the colleagues, we're not in this meeting, because I don't hear what people are doing. You do not get a warning. You, you, you don't possess that capability. When Attorney Katrina Earlin from California sent an email to Autumn Astane that she wished that you had the courage to discipline her. And she tried to appeal to your better sense of foreplay. When Eva told you at the meeting that you can warn me, it was worth it, because she had said some things with audience member, Arjuna Wilson. And you did not warn her then. So you can't expect everybody to sit up here and. And we'll talk about Facebook, yeah, I'm too old for Facebook and all that. You be commenting on stuff on me, and it's just shame. Email to my daughter's picture, your comment was disrespectful. When she was called, it was not expected that she was called a monkey. My daughter was called a monkey, they put it across her picture. Put it across her picture, then due to I was having an affair with Councilman Piper. I mean, it just, it got bad. Then when you came online, if I scrolled to, you keep putting my picture up, and Councilman Murphy Carter's picture up, saying we abstain. My colleagues should go. You took the picture that I put about, so now two of those are in your board. I don't know how to, there is no, I gave up on you. Let me put, I gave up on you. I gave up on you a long time ago, and at the beginning I did believe in you, and you know that. I gave up on you, because you gave up on us. You decided to choose sides, and it was more important to be a caretaker. You writing nasty myself on Facebook, and I'm not the kind, you not gonna hit me, you hit me, I'm gonna be dragged. You put my children up, oh, that's it. You didn't tell that woman that she should not be putting up my daughter and her husband. You didn't do that, because my daughter is married to a white man. I've been open about it, we care less. My great grandmother is white. So when you talk about things that you do, and you come here like you got cleanest, you have dirty hands, muddy hands. You put my picture up within a Q's meet up, um, campaign violation and gifts, then you had Doug come up here and make a fool out of himself. Now, when I wanna show you the receipt, you called me out of order and gave me a warning, as if you could hear way back there. My argument must have a conversation, as I held my iPad in one hand, and he said, my perfectly manicured fingernails. And you've been taking that and running with it, but I did get my feeling this past weekend, just so you know, since y'all watching my fingernails. But you have to be clear. I don't know if someone can mentor you, pull you back, but I think until you figure it out, chairing isn't your thing right now. We need to have someone that's chair.
All right, anyone else in the first round?
There's a lot on, um, Mr. Murphy, when you made the comment about, uh, me posting something. It's not like I'm very close to that. But you believe that I posted that randomly and not without, um, having reasons? Because colleagues in the second order of the night were posted during this meeting.
Yes, yes. Tell the past is that.
And then almost two years, you know that that's kinda happened.
One other information.
Oh, God.
Oh, Lord.
Um, can Mr. Pfeiffer please state what he posted so we can truly discuss?
State what you post.
Thank you.
So, I hope that you realize that the person can only push their card. Before they have, they have response.
Hey, you gotta check around.
Do you mind if I say?
What are you?
So, right now, my, and I have been, almost two years, I've never done that. I haven't ever commented comments. I've never done any of that while I've been sitting in this seat. So, I hope that when you say that. How you know who the offenders are?
She has a pad.
Requesting permission. Or did you do it?
Oh.
I signed the record that I've done. And I, I just said that I've done it on, on.
That's, that's a warning.
One order. Can you warn yourself, you properly took the floor?
I don't know. It's why we need to remove you.
You, you took, you took the floor properly. Did you do it?
No, no, I didn't hear.
Oh, you don't do that.
You support that. No, you support that. No, you support that.
Mr. Retired, yeah, huh?
They're talking on my phone. Hey, Officer, he deserves a lawsuit, he tried to snatch my phone. He tried to snatch my phone by my hands.
I'm gonna take your picture of you.
I'm gonna take your picture of you and if I want it to.
I'm gonna order a, a ten minute recess without a session.
I told y'all, man, if y'all don't get her out of the chair.
That's why.
She the, she the reason, she the reason why, man. Yeah. I'm telling y'all, man. Oh, it's done.
I got a job, but you need to start my, my, this way. That's what you need to start to. Get your, get your, I'm coming out.
She coming out.
I'm coming out.
She's coming out, don't, it's on camera. It's on camera.
Do it, come do it, Tanya. I have to go, I have to do it, understand that, understand that. I'm coming down and she gonna fall foul. You always lying. She was just up there talking about Pfeiffer. You have a mental problem. I'm coming down and I'm chasing her. Girl, bow.
You ain't doing that because you got a huge ass toward.
I'm coming, where Paul coming down, she up, I got you.
Hey, Paul, man, Paul, don't even do that shit. Don't even do that, man. You sit up, you stand at the damn podium talking about all five hands. Man, fuck your fingers, man. You sit up here and divide shit, man. Get the fuck out of here. That's some foul shit. Man, y'all need to get her ass out, out of chair. Quincy, man, you wrong, man. You wrong, bro. You side with her, man, and you know she wrong. Man, I, you are elected official. You elected official, man. You elected official. Man, you're elect, oh, you know, I don't care. You know, I don't care. I just said, man, you wrong. I just said you wrong, bro. You see what I'm saying? Don't invite me to shit. Don't invite me to shit, for real. I just said you wrong.
Don't worry about what I mean.
Man, you're elected official. You elected official, man. I can, I can say your decision sucks. I can say your decision sucks. That's what I can say. For real, man. Y'all some sad ass people up in here, man. All y'all. Y'all sit up here and talk about division and all that shit, and y'all be the main ones dividing people, man. For real, Paul, be stronger than the fingers and all this bullshit. And you sitting up here, man, agging it on, man, by femenitarianing them. Y'all some ignorant ass people, man. For real. Then, uh, Deanna, Dee, Dee, Dee Train, whatever your name is, man, you, you stand up there and say the same shit. And then you sitting back there taking pictures of people, man. That's some foul shit. That's some foul shit, man. So why, you, what I'm saying, man, y'all, y'all, y'all doing bullshit, man. Y'all doing bullshit. Man, y'all doing bullshit. Y'all, hey, hey, oh, cronies. Hey, listen, I don't know, hey, hey, listen, I don't have cronies. I don't have cronies. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying, man, y'all on bullshit. Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah. All y'all on bullshit. All y'all, all y'all, I'm telling y'all in y'all face, fuck Facebook. I'm telling all y'all in y'all face, man. All y'all some bullshitting ass people, man. For real. Y'all sit up here and talk about division and all that other bullshit. And we gotta get together, unity and all that shit, and y'all be doing shit behind the scenes. Sitting up there supporting LaDell's bullshit. Having press conference and all that other bullshit. Man, go somewhere with that shit. All y'all. And then Quincy, the van, the people up in the front row. You was the main one screaming with us before, man, when you was sitting on this side. Oh, how power motherfucker changes people. Get the fuck out of here. I don't give a fuck. I don't give a fuck. You know I don't give a fuck. Uh, you know I don't give a fuck. Oh, no, it ain't where you live, motherfucker. Shit, I don't need Facebook, I say my shit in your face.
Is this the end? Is the meeting over?
Yep.
Shit.
I thought she had left.
Come on, man, they support that bullshit, man. All of them support that bullshit. Paul, you know you doing some bullshit.
Don't trust them, none of them.
Hello? They can't, they're gonna end it, oh, hell, man. This is crazy.